We're going to go ahead and get started with our work session, August 17th, 2021. Got a few things on our agenda night that are pretty important. Want to remain focused, that's for sure. So let's start off with item A1. This is a presentation by Dave Meyer regarding the procurement of the ozone equipment for the water treatment plant. Dave?
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all again. Dave Meyer, engineer, Wellington. I'm back here with Will Martin from HP Hydro. Speaking in a second. Richard Saxton from.
Somebody has their microphone on. Do you have your? Who's got the sound?
Someone's talking back there.
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. You good?
I think so. Nope. Okay. Nope. Anybody else on Zoom?
Testing one, two, three. Dave Meyer? Thank you. So I'll go first, and project manager from Jacobs on the water treatment plant expansion. So we're here tonight to prime the board on the upcoming purchase of ozone equipment for the water plant expansion. Right now, the design is approaching 60%, which is a major milestone in the process. Expected delivery from Jacobs or plants and specs at the end of this month, a couple of weeks from now. After that, Hydro here will be starting work on the 60% cost estimate, which will be delivered about October 8. So one of the higher cost items to the project is the ozone system that will provide us with the taste and odor treatment that the town needs. And that equipment comes with a long lead time. It's possible we may be coming to the board before we establish a guaranteed maximum price for approval on purchasing this ozone equipment, maybe some other equipment as well. For now, we're focusing on ozone. So the procurement of that equipment will be led by our senior contractor, HP Hydro. Will Martin here will speak a little bit about that. He'll be using specifications prepared by Jacobs that include performance specifications, requirements, along with a bid form that the ozone companies can fill out. Answering questions like equipment costs, power requirements and that cost, billing requirements that will help us evaluate the bids when they do come in. So that leads us to the schedule I outlined in your package, starting with HP Hydro advertising the ozone package and bid form in early September, a couple of weeks away. Those bids would be received in early October, according to our schedule right now. So the entire team will have some time after that to review and select a preferred supplier of the ozone equipment. And bring those recommendations to the board, late October, early November. Assuming we'll get approval from the board, HP Hydro can then issue an intent to the chosen provider. And afterwards Jacobs can begin proceeding with the remainder of the ozone design and that facility. So a quick word on cost, I know you guys are all thinking what is ozone cost. Obviously, we'll get a better handle on those numbers once we get the bid forms in. Will can provide you a little bit more information and estimates that we use for the 30% cost estimate momentarily. So again, Richard Saxton is going to provide us right now with some additional detail on what we're looking at here. Speak to a few other items on your board package and issue it simple potential purchase order and timing on things that are coming up very soon. After that, Mr. Martin here will say more about the state of the procurement of ozone equipment in the industry these days, along with estimating some most dollar amounts that y'all are thinking about right now, echoing back to what we use for the 30%. So, Richard?
Good evening. Nice to be here in person.
Nice to see you in person.
And thanks for bearing with some of those Zoom calls where I have some feedback and I was even harder to understand the normals. As Dave said, the ozone equipment is something that we did anticipate having to pre-procure, or at least establish who we're going to use in our original scope of work. So that's kind of a something we anticipated. Specifically ozone equipment, there's different shapes and sizes and models. And it's like, you need a garage big enough to hold a smart car or a, you know, big American truck, you know, so what are we designing around? So this will really help us optimize the design for the right vendor, which just makes sense for everything. The basis of the procurement package, which we'll have ready at the end of the month, will be then advertised by Hydro to the vendors. We'll be looking at not just the capital costs of what needs to be provided by different vendors to meet the performance criteria, but also the O and M costs, the power, the chemical usage, really the efficiency of it. You know, you buying something which, you know, that's 50 miles to the gallon, it costs more than something that buys 20 miles to the gallon, it burns more gas, right? Over the course of a 20-year lifecycle, what's the most cost effective product for you to use? In addition to that, the size of the facility differs. Like I said, how big of a building do we need? So that'll be very valuable information that we need going forward. The biggest thing I wanted to point out would be that since we kind of worked as a team to prepare this outline in here, if you look at the bottom paragraph from bottom of the first page, we had anticipated, and this will be leading to Will talking a bit more, that all you would need to do is issue an intent to purchase, which may still be true for the ozone, we'll see. But that you wouldn't be committing any funds or any real commitment until after you have the guaranteed maximum price kind of at the end of the design. Given however, what the industry is facing as regards lead time and needing to get things done sooner, that might be something that needs to change on other equipment, other metal buildings and so on. So we will know more in a month or two and Will can probably talk to that. But that's kind of a little piece I had. So any questions on the ozone side?
And just as a clarification, this is the big piece that's going to help a lot with the taste and odor concerns.
So, okay. Yep. Great, thanks.
Evening all. Good to meet you all. First time in here, but good down the road. So I've been anxious to see what the inside looks like. So as Dave and Richard alluded to, there's a lot of volatility in the market. We have pricing now and our 30% cost estimate was based on the design milestone 30% that was submitted by Jacobs in March, which is obviously a very volatile time. So there is not only that, but also a wide variety of ozone manufacturers, different technologies. So we're looking at, originally, we were looking at a price tag on this from the 2.3 to 2.7 million dollar range for the ozone package. Through some VE design efforts of the whole project team, we were able to get that down closer to 1.6, 1.7 million, depending on the vendor. But as as Richard stated, there's a lot of other contributing factors there. And as Dave mentioned, we have a bid form to kind of evaluate those building size and cost to run the equipment and things like that. So we're trying to pull together as much information as we can on this pre-procurement package to evaluate these vendors evenly. And as Richard was stating, the market, the way it is, we're seeing things. You know, it's been up and down. Wood lumber is starting to come down a little bit as of late, but other things like steel, metal buildings and things like that, we're seeing lead times out to a year. So it's as far as the project schedule goes, something might need to be done sooner than later on things like that. So this ozone being a critical piece, something the town has been determined to build into this project, this is something we want to look at very closely. Beyond that, we're looking at contractually putting this bid form together where we can try and lock in a price and lock in the vendor for design assistance to finish out those remaining design milestones. So they'd be not only agreeing to a price and a delivery, but they'd be willing to hold that price for a certain amount of time while they assisted us with the design. If we go that route, the other option, as Richard stated, would be to do an early procurement, a true early procurement contract with them, which would allow us to to have some funds and get some more detailed cost or more detailed design information from them to assist in design. But the way that the the way that the schedule lays out now, we think the best way to eliminate variables in this design and estimating process would be to put together an intent to purchase, have some design assistance, and issue a formal purchase agreement when things are finalized. Any questions on any of that?
Anyone?
I got. Just on the lead time, or actually not the lead time, but the quote part of it. I know that currently in the industrial world, most manufacturers on specially built items are making you cut a PO within 15 days of their quote, or their quote is no longer good. Do you anticipate that being probably kind of the way that's going to work? Or if you select the vendor because you're going to do some type of design work with them, do you feel that the bid or, you know, the quote will be a firm quote throughout the process of, you know, back and forth, you know, whatever needs to be done between, you know, their engineering department and construction wise and the engineering to make sure that, you know, the piece of equipment you're going to get is exactly what you want?
Sure. Yeah, we've seen the same. We've seen anything from 30 days down to two days, or, you know, the the right to reevaluate pricing up till the day of fabrication on certain things. But that's more in the material vendor sort of world, fabrication and miscellaneous metals and piping and things like that that experienced quite a bit of volatility in volume. These specialty equipment contracts and the way that we plan to approach this, we'll write it into this bid form and into the procurement package that they should hold their price until a certain date or a certain duration from the bid date. We spoke with some of these vendors about this approach and they're open to it. They're all, you know, this is an important project to them. And we'll write that into the bid package, like I said, to ensure that they're agreeing to that prior to making any selections.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Like the decrease from 2.3 to 2.7, thank you, or down. That's good.
And that came with some design impacts. But ultimately, this system is something that sounds like the town's after.
Well, we appreciate you done so far. That's good news. And I know you're probably going to need latitude, so come to us. Okay. It's important. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to our next item, two, board and commission discussion. Patty?
So I'm going to hang out here because I've got my partners in crime on either side of me to help with that discussion. So one of the things that we looked at just recently was boards and commissions. We were looking at the municipal code as a whole and saw a lot of inconsistencies with our boards and commissions with some of them, as you, if you read your packet material, you will see that there are some, some boards and commissions don't even have a residency requirement. So we felt it would be a good time to just open up the discussion about the various advisory boards and commissions to see, you know, what your thoughts are as far as residency requirements. Should trustee members be on the various advisory boards? Should they be liaison or be a voting member? You know, there's different things to talk about. What are requirements of your advisory board members? You know, is there, should there be an attendance requirement? You know, there's just a lot of things that you can look at and we initially as staff started to put some information together for you to bring for a recommendation. And then we thought twice about it and thought, you know, you guys really need to have an open discussion about what your thoughts are. I put together a couple bullet points there about, you know, some discussion items, but, and I did say in the memo that there are four active boards and commissions, but there's actually five. And then if you add the Wellington library onto it, we would have six. So it's up to you guys how you want to proceed. Dan has got the legal information, you know, as far as requirements for Board of Adjustments and Planning Commission and some recommendations on that. But beyond that, it's really an open discussion for you all to see what you would like with your boards and commissions. And if you're happy with the way they are, you know, and just want some cleanup language as far as, you know, residency requirements and things like that, then we can do that as well.
So we just go through these one by one?
You bet.
Okay, first one, CAC. Any opening comments about the CAC?
Board of Adjustment.
Wow.
There we go.
We ought to start with the Board of Trustees.
So, so right now, the Board of Adjustments, the Board of Adjustments has five voting members and two alternates that are appointed by the trustees. The two alternates are trustee members. Trustee members can only serve as alternates. They cannot serve as full members on that, on that board. There is no membership requirements or criteria listed. And the Board of Adjustments is a little bit different and Dan can speak to that about their role and what they do for the town.
The Board of Adjustments is created by state statute. It's a requirement and primarily hears appeals from decisions of the town on zoning, but also grant variances. So it's not an advisory board as some of the other advisory boards are. It has its own authority to hear those appeals, which are then appealed to the district court if somebody wanted to. There is no statutory requirement for who sits on this board per the state statute. It can be pretty much anybody. Alternates are an option. It can be modified by ordinance based on how long you want people to serve on it, who you want to serve on it. So it's pretty open. I think right now there is a vacancy on it and that vacancy has been there since
April. Is that correct?
It's been vacant since April. So it's been a bit of a challenge to get people to apply for that board perhaps. But they wanted to, like as Patty said, we wanted to have that conversation about what do you want it to look like before we brought forward a recommendation or anything else.
So in this one in particular, there is no residency requirement. There's, it's an open book.
So we have alternates on it. You're an alternate on that. So it's wired up. What do you think? You spent some time with it. I personally don't think that a trustee member should be on the Board of Adjustments. Just for the simple fact is it's asking for, typically it's going to be asking for a variance to a code that was adopted possibly by me. So I kind of would be, there could be the perception that you're slanted towards the code and not open to variation, you know, that's, but that's the whole point of it is to, you know, have the opportunity to get that. I mean, I've voted for variances most of the time because they made sense, but there's obviously the possibility for looking at you guys. There's the possibility that, you know, there could be that thought that somebody's, you know, they're going to, you know, whether it's true or not, it doesn't really matter. Perception's everything as we all know. So I'm in favor of not having a board member on it. I also understand the challenges that Cody's had to go through at times trying to get a board to be able to meet and have enough members to take a vote. So, you know, it may take some, it may not happen overnight, but I think that's what we should work towards, you know, is to to get people excited about possibly serving on a Board of Adjustments. And the nice thing about this board versus all the rest of them is they don't necessarily meet very often, you know, you could go almost a whole year without having to meet because, you know, if nobody wants to get a variance, then, you know, there's no reason to meet. So, and I think that also that we should put a residency requirement on this. I think you need to live within the town of Wellington to serve on this because you're making a judgment on somebody's request that lives in the town that could be your neighbor or could be, you know. So that gives them, you know, say in what the ultimate look of the town will be versus somebody that lives out in the county that, you know, yeah, go ahead and build that 35-foot tower in the middle of your front yard. I don't really care because I'm never going to see it type thing. So those are my two, only two things about the Board of Adjustments that I think need to be adjusted, that need to be adjusted.
I just wanted to echo, well, I know in the, I was going to ask what is normal and customary in other municipalities because certainly the town did have to come before the board. And obviously neither of the alternate, even though there was a vacancy, neither of the alternates really felt they could sit in that because it had to do with the town facility. And I think that's the right decision. Question is, is that likely to happen again? So, I mean, obviously there was a vacancy. So was there a quorum issue that you?
I don't think so. I think there was a quorum.
Okay.
I know it got voted upon. I wasn't there because.
It, yeah, it was before the vacancy. And one additional challenge of the Board of Adjustments is it does require four votes for certain actions. And so if you only have five members, if you don't have quorum, you really aren't going to get enough votes to do anything. I mean,
How many people are on that board?
Currently, it's a seven-person board, five members, two alternates, but currently there's a vacancy in the five members.
But a passing vote is.
Requires four, but there's only five voting members.
I see, I see.
The alternates would become a voting member in the order of that. So it's a high bar.
And this is quasi judicial as well, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
I think through these discussions too, we have to really classify the boards and commission by the quasi judicial category versus the simply advisory ones as well. Because those, they may have different situations that could apply. And then other thing I think that we should consider as we're going through all this is what would be applicable to every single advisory or board or committee. It would be really great to clean up the language too. So if it was an advisory committee or it would be called a committee, for example, if it was a board, it would be called a board. So I think that would be helpful, at least for distinguishing the difference between them. But I can clearly state for sure that anybody who's serving in these roles should be a resident of the town. I think that's pretty straightforward. I don't know if anybody would really disagree with that for just the vested interests. Somebody should be a resident if they're making decisions or advising on things that should change in town, they should live here. So that would be my suggestion for sure. And then just the separation of classifications of the those two different categories of groups.
No, no, no thoughts on whether or not having a trustee on there?
You know, I, and I'd like to look into this further and to be honest, I'm not super familiar with the Board of Adjustment. So I'm obviously learning more about it right now. But the nice thing about the group of the trustees is there, in addition to doing these roles, they're a dedicated group of volunteers too. So the idea of having alternates as trustees, I think, could be valuable for sure. Because if and when we need people to show up, this is the group that shows up, right? We come to everything. We go everywhere. We attend meetings that we're not even on the boards or committees. So I think throwing that away would be unfortunate. But I don't think that trustees should ever hold anywhere near a close majority on a committee or board. For example, if at the planning commission, one person wasn't there, there would be an equal number of not Board of Trustees and Boards of Trustees members making that vote. It would be 50/50. So I don't think that's necessarily a scenario that should ever happen, but we also shouldn't be able to continue doing business because not enough people are there for quorum. So I kind of like the idea of the potential, kind of like how the Board of Adjustments works where there's an alternate, but not so significant that they are half the vote within that group.
Okay. Some towns as a kind of in between, a lot of towns and cities, the board members or the council members would sit as liaison members to those boards. So it's a way that you could be assigned to a particular board or commission and be very involved in that, but not sit as a voting member. So as an alternative, and that could be on almost any of these boards and instead of making them voting or an alternate.
What are the legal quorum requirements for these quasi judicial boards outside of?
It varies depending on the size of the board itself.
So we could determine that there's no requirements or limitations based on state law?
In the planning commission and the Board of Adjustments, you can vary that by ordinance or.
Okay.
And I can tell you through my work over the years that it's very, very rare to have an elected official on Board of Adjustments. It's generally a very, it's a very separate board that is autonomous on their own. Generally, the planning director participates in the meetings. Generally, the town attorney, I'm finding, does not participate. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But it's very rare to have an elected official on Board of Adjustments as a voting member or on Planning Commission as a voting member. My history, I think I've told some of you in Loveland, the city councillors are not even allowed to look at the planning commission packets. It's that regimented. I have seen elected officials as liaisons, but not as voting members. That's just some history.
Probably for the same reason that trustee Jerome was mentioning, how those should be separated. So that's understandable.
So, yeah, I think that I definitely agree with trustee Jerome and a lot of the other comments that have been made. I think we need to avoid, and again, I guess overall, I don't think that we as trustees should have a voting role on any of the boards. I think that our role to set policy and budget happens here. I think we need to be involved as liaisons because I can just say, just from being on the CAC, I think there are a lot of things that need to be communicated either from the board to the CAC or from the CAC to the board that just having a trust, and also if something ever gets out of hand, we as the Board of Trustees appoint members to the board. And if there needs to be action taken on that, we as the trustees are also in charge of that. So it's good to have one of us there that's actually monitoring things. So if something is out of control, we can take care of that or deal with it. So I think we need to be present, but I don't think we should have a voting role because I think that should be tied to here. And there should never be a question of, okay, well, we already know how you're going to vote before something comes to that. And then with, I know with the Board of Adjustments, nothing comes to us from that, but it's still a quasi judicial. As trustee Jerome said, maybe we pass the law or the ordinance that they're asking to get a variance against. And now we're sitting on the board deciding whether or not you get that variance. It doesn't look good. So I think as an overall, I don't think trustees should be voting members at all. I think having a liaison is good. With the Board of Adjustments, I definitely, so I would say any of the boards that are potentially setting variances or codes should have that requirement on the residency for sure. Absolutely. To me, there should be no question about that. If you're going to be setting codes like trustee Jerome said, we don't want you deciding whether or not someone could build something you'll never see again. That should be someone who's familiar and living with the codes. So other boards, we'll talk about those when we get there, but those are kind of my thoughts. I think that we should not be voting members on that board. And I do think there should be a residency requirement because they are making decisions on town policy or code variation, various variances, not policy.
Fair enough. Anyone else? You bet.
Well, I mean, my fellow trustees, I think, have hit all of the highlights and I agree with a majority of the sentiments. I think that quasi judicial boards should require residency if they're advisory in capacity. I think that our rural community plays a lot in the culture of our town. I don't think that we should discount that. That's it? I mean, everybody, everybody touched on everything else?
I just had one other comment and I think it's really important as we go through this that, you know, we're trustees and we have to, we're entrusted to do the right thing. And again, these quasi judicial boards, one of the things people really need to realize is when we're sitting here, we're not making personal decisions. We're making decision that reflects in our opinions that were the best course for our community. And you really do need to separate your, the role you have in, you know, on, let's say, the Board of Adjustments and that of what you might think of as a citizen, because, I mean, they will inform each other, but the decisions really are quite different. The scope of them is quite different. I mean, these are, some of these things affect the entire town. So I do think it's important to keep those that separate. And I certainly try to do that and I know everyone else does, but it's, I think sometimes that's not necessarily stated very clearly that that's really where this all comes from, is that we have to separate these roles. That's really where this all comes from is that we have to separate these roles.
I kind of, oh, I, I kinda wanna throw a amendment to what I said earlier. Um. In addition to residents of Wellington, I think people who have a very vested interest in Wellington are those within our growth management area as well. Because even if they aren't necessary within the, the boundaries of the town right now, knowing and planning for the future that they could potentially be. I think that's a significant consideration too. So I, I don't know, I, I really think that people should be a resident, but. If we are really considering people have a vested interest or care or want to form Wellington and be a part of the future. Those folks who reside within a growth managed area could potentially have more desire to be a part of that than, than others. So. Uh, just something to consider there.
What about for this board though and the GMA? You know, we, we brought up.
I think she expressed that it should be a resident because it's quasi judicial, the Board of Adjustments.
I heard you just say you, you think we should extend it to the GMA.
No, 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 no. I mean, for, not for quasi judicial ones, but for other advisory kind of uses, those kind of needs. I think we should maybe, sorry, I'm talking about all, everything in general, just going, but. I know, and I'm bouncing all over the place. Board of Adjustments, here we go.
Okay.
Okay, so what I've heard is residency required, um, no Board of Trustees on the BOA and that's it.
Do we, are there currently term limits set on the Board of Adjustments? I know that we're having a hard time filling it.
Term of office is three years.
Three years and then unlimited terms.
Correct, they are all unlimited terms.
Okay. Okay, we good?
Yeah, you guys wanna change that and lock them in for longer since we have a hard time? Well, we, we're having a hard time filling it and maybe do it for four years.
This is your chance. Ten year terms, fine.
Yeah, I'm teasing.
Is three years consistent on the, all the?
Yeah, I don't think so. They're all different.
That's why we're here.
How about four?
No lifetime appointments.
Well, four is typically, three is kind of an odd number of years. So yeah, maybe, let's see, I'm trying to think. What are other boards were based on this?
I think most of them are four.
Yeah, so the CAC is three years too, but yeah, I think maybe just going to four years and just having a consistent, consistent term, because we do have a kind of weird, so our planning commissioners are six years. Some of our boards are three and then some are four. So I think, yeah, if we can maybe just four is, I mean, that's a normal term that people expect to have on things. So yeah, maybe just go to that.
The, the state statute for Board Adjustment says three years, but it could be, but it could be varied by ordinance. And so a lot of these code items as we're trying to clean up.
I thought we asked you that earlier.
State statute and just dropped it in there. So, so certainly that can be adjusted, but that's the reason.
Are there any other statutes that we need to know about for the Board of Adjustments?
This is all part of the same statute that can all be varied by, all these items can be varied by ordinance. So, um, it's.
So state says, but we can do whatever we want, more or less.
Okay.
So four years? Four years going once, going twice? Awesome. Um, CA, okay.
Moving on to CAC, um, CAC shall consist of five to seven members. Um, they do have a three-year term, a Board of Trustee member is appointed by the mayor and their term coincides with their elected term. That person isn't elected, is a voting member. Um, the CAC does have some responsibilities beyond what normal advisory boards would have. They don't, they aren't necessarily advisory in nature. Um, because they do have a budget that they work on, um, they oversee, I guess, events is what I understand. So that their requirements are residency within a seven mile radius of the town or an ownership of a business which operates in the town and holds a valid business license. Or they need to be employed or enrolled in a school operated by the Pooter School District and situated within the boundaries of the town. So this is one that I initially had a lot of heartburn worth, with when I first started, um, just because of their autonomy. I'd never. Experienced, um, a board like this who, that was not a 501(c)(3). Or anything like that. And we, I had Kelly and Hallie check around the state to see if there was anybody else, because I thought, well, maybe I'm just having heartburn and I, I just need to talk to someone and. How they, how they work with it within their municipality. We cannot find another one like this in the state. So this one is special. This is special just for Wellington and I, um, I have met with various board members on, from the CAC and they're very, you know, passionate. About their responsibilities and, and their role and trustee Gator might be able to touch on that a little bit as well. So this is just again, a discussion point for you all. Um, I think that talking about residency within the GMA sounds smart. Um, but again, that's all up for discussion for you all.
John, you wanna start us off? You're on the board.
Sure. Um, so this is again, where I would agree that, um, the whole trustee should not be voting member. Um, I would prefer not to be. Um, for example, this last year, we were making the decision as to whether to, um. Have the parade, not the parade, the parade was always going to stay there. No. No, it was, yeah, whether or not to move the.
Event.
Event itself down to the Buffalo Creek Park or Wellington Community Park or keep it up at Centennial. And the, the board was split on that. And I think that it's really valuable to have the members of the community who've been here for a long time. You know, I ultimately want approving budget for things like that, but I'm not the one that should be telling the members of community, hey, this is how we're gonna do this. And so I was not the deciding vote, but it was pretty close that had there been one other vote that had swayed the other way, I would have been the deciding vote. And that's not a position I as the trustee want to be in. And so I would again say, I think the liaison role in it. I, I don't think that should just be like a passive role where it's just, you know, kinda sit back, kick your feet up. I think it's still engaging in it, but not helping make the decisions. Um, and because I know for the CAC, we do have, as Patty said, we've got a lot of people with varying opinions, but they're very passionate about the town. Um, you know, for a lot of them, they've been involved in this town in one shape or another for decades. And they really care a lot about the events and things that we're doing here and they want to make things really great. And ultimately, I think that's good to have that. I think that it's that partnership between members of the community and then the town itself doing things, which I think is really good. It's not just us as the town coming in and saying, okay, this is what we're gonna do. It's like, it's actually community members putting it together, putting it on and then working together with the town to make it happen. Um, that being said, I think that there needs to be a lot of cleaning up and hopefully. At the last meeting with setting out ground rules, I started the process on that. Um, that's something I think we need to do for all of our boards is basically the same ground rules we put in place for ourselves. Um, we need to have that same expectation and communicate that to our other boards. Because that was one of the issues that I was, I had noticed, but was also brought to my attention with the CAC was just a lot of the issues, the same things that we went through in our, um. Board retreat and just working out with, among ourselves of how we operate together. And it's been really good for us and I think it would be beneficial for the boards. Um, and I know as Patty said, the CAC is unlike anything else and I understand that, um, but I also think that's not a bad thing. Um, we don't want Wellington to just be like everyone else. There are a lot of things about this community that are really unique. And I think part of that is, is because we as the town aren't controlling everything. We have citizens putting things together. We've got great events that are coming from the CAC. We've got great events that are coming from Main Streets. We've got great events coming from the Chamber. It's like we have all these different people doing different things and I think that's really valuable. So I think that we need to look at if there's adjustments that need to be made, but I think it's something that's important for us to keep. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question? Open it up.
Oh, sorry, one last thing. Um, and with the residency, I do like the idea of understanding for non quasi judicial that we allow other members of the. Surrounding community, because I know at our meeting last night, we had several people that came out that were not from the town boundaries of Wellington, but they still look at this as their town. Uh, they might live miles outside of town, but they still view Wellington as their town. They're in our area of influence. And so I think it's important that we allow those people in a non quasi judicial setting. To be able to help with putting on events and things like that and feel like they are engaging at a higher level if they're so desire that, so.
Well, if you don't mind, I'm gonna piggyback on that one point right there. We did meet with the, uh, um. What you would call, you know, our Hispanic groups that are live outside of town and they were very passionate about wanting to be involved in things. And they're not too far out, they're within our, they're within the area. And their kids all go to schools here. They all go through the elementary schools, junior highs, they're all going to CSU and they all have the same thing. They wanna, they'd like to participate. And that was a big, a big, a part of their reason to meet and talk about things and, and they just wanted to learn how. So, uh, you know, for, for that, like this, for that, for that purpose, I'm, I'm fine with a board like this having that kind of, you know, that diameter or area to work with, you know. Uh, uh, for one thing. And I don't wanna go out, I, I'm gonna go pan it back over at this point before I go to that other one that I wanted to bring up. So anybody else?
Um, I have. A lot of concerns about us operating as the only community. That's doing this and, and the reason, and I, I'm coming from a couple of points. So, um, the first one is. I am involved in event planning with a nonprofit in town with Wellington Main Streets program. I chair Wellarama. Um, and we plan that. And planning it through a nonprofit provides the responsibility and accountability of a specific organization for that event. Not only that, but they carry their own insurance and licensing, um, and that's how they operate to do events in our town. Um, and there is very clear reasons why that's required. So. Permits from Fire District, event permits from the town, um, liability concerns and questions, and then the organization power required to plan an event. So we plan a four hour event. We plan about a year in advance with a dedicated committee of volunteers. It's a lot of work, um, and we have a full-time employee. That's responsible for those tasks and that liability by, of the nonprofit, right? So, or they have people helping to plan it and advise, but the nonprofit itself is hosting the event with their insurance, with those kind of things. So when we have a situation like the CAC, um, who's doing fantastic work with that dedication, exactly as I mentioned, volunteers giving. Hours and hours to plan massive events. That's fantastic, but those are also not the people accountable or who hold the accountability of the liability of the event on them. They're not responsible for it necessarily. And I think that missing link, um, could cause some loopholes that maybe, and what we've, we've seen in other examples that. We have to really pick up that slack and provide that additional support through staffing from the town. Um, a significant amount of hours of staff from the town. So I have a lot of concerns about how that's working necessarily. Um, so I do wanna bring that up. Um, the other thing is the CAC hosts, they essentially host the biggest event of Wellington. That's in our Wellington sign, the fireworks. It's, it's what people say when they talk about Wellington, what's special about Wellington, they say coming to. The festivals and events for Fourth of July. It is the premier biggest thing of the town. Yet we have no individual planning that who's accountable or liable for the event.
Well, trustee Kenny, I'm sorry, just one quick clarification for the fireworks. The Board of Trustees is responsible specifically just for the fireworks, but all, all of the rest of the Fourth of July events. All of the rest of that is the CAC. So I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that one small thing.
I appreciate that and that's good, but also it's the core of the event that they're planning. So, um, I. If, if indeed the CAC is an advisory committee, which is fantastic, they provide advice, direction, scope, vision, maybe potentially. For those things that they're doing, I think that's fantastic, but execution of events. Anything relating to a liability for the town perspective cannot fall in the hands of volunteers. I think there, there has to be a reason why that's not an operational model. You know, there has to be an organization, there has to be the town itself that's, which we are responsible for it, but then involved in, in controlling in a sense. As to how that works to make sure it's feasible and safe. And we're getting to a point where this event is so large. That it is not something that can, can only fall on the hands of volunteers. Um, I just, I think that that's something that we need to acknowledge. If this is gonna be the premier event, this is gonna be huge, not to mention all the other many events that happen. And it can't be dictated by a strictly advisory committee. It has to have that accountability and that liability concerns with it too.
Can I ask you a question then just to kinda clarify? Is that, so that Fourth of July, what about everything else?
I mean, I think that's the same for everything, every major event that, that's like that. I, I understand that there's advice and direction and I think that's fantastic. And if it's an advisory committee, that's essentially what they're accomplishing. I think that there could potentially be, and I think this might be for another conversation, but this is why this is working session. Is wondering why we don't have staffing dedicated to events and marketing. Because if, if that's where the real liability and accountability comes to, we may need to consider that. We're maybe understaffed in that area. And if that's the premiere of what Wellington's about, making sure that runs seamlessly. You know, we talked about what if we can't get fireworks for next year? What could happen? You know, we've had that discussion already, but yet. That conversation is being run by volunteers when really that's so important to the town that we, we really need that to be driven. From maybe a staffing perspective, I don't know. So. Uh, what I'm saying though is if we're talking about a committee that's for an advisory purpose, that we need to know who they're advising. One, and then maybe with the roles and responsibility and limitations of that is. Because they do need to work within a scope, because you know, next year if that, that voting party decides that we're doing something. Even bigger, crazier, you know, who knows what, um, and we have to follow through with that. We need to understand that we need to have limits and, and some boundaries on how that works. So. And I know they check in all the time. I'm not saying that anybody is just, you know, trying to do something horrible, but I think at this point, it's something that needs. If it's advisory, it's advisory and then who are they advising? And then based on that, then who's in the committee? So. Um, and definitely every, I, every board needs a liaison, every committee needs a liaison. I think that goes without saying, so.
I have a couple of questions for you trustee Kenny. So you don't want those volunteers to run the show? Who do you want to run it?
I, I mean, the volun, okay, this brings up so many things that I've been thinking about, but. Um, volunteers in general are needed for the town for so many things, cleanup days, specific events for the Activity Commission. There are so many needs for volunteers, yet we have no liability waivers for any of our volunteers. So I, I wanna, I just wanna bring that up before, above and beyond, before we do anything. Anybody who's serving in the capacity of a volunteer, meaning they're not employed by the town in Wellington, should probably agree to some kind of liability waiver. Photo waiver, those kind of things. So I do wanna set the ground rules too. So as we're discussing all these boards and commissions. We should definitely make that a basic requirement of everybody who's volunteering in that capacity. So. Volunteers are essential for all those item, items. So having a list of volunteers who are ready and able to come to events and that is gonna be important. And volunteers shouldn't be limited by any kind of residency rules. So anybody who wants to participate and come to an event and run that event. They should be able to do that and they should be one of our registered volunteers. And I think that's fantastic. So even if we do determine a. A, a limit, limitation of area of who couldn't serve on whatever boards and committees, anybody's welcome to be a volunteer. Maybe there's some roles that require certain background checks. If you're volunteering at the library, for example. So, but I think we do need some kind of control and process to make sure. That we are safe from the town perspective against liability concerns. And that of course, everybody who is on a vet with volunteers is also safe and that we can provide that confidently. So that regarding volunteers, that's something I did wanna mention. Given that unfortunately, if you're on these boards and commissions, you don't get paid in case anybody was questioning about that, you know, so, um. But yeah, the, the advisory committee, I think would be number one people there volunteering. So Wellarama, I volunteered for twelve hours that day. So I helped plan it and I was a twelve hour volunteer that day. So I would imagine those people who are advising and planning. An event would, would be the top people running the event as well.
Okay, so who would that be? I mean, do you suggest we hire a company? I mean, that was kind of my question is who would run the show?
Okay, so.
And then the second question would be, did you sign a waiver when you volunteered for the Wellington Main Streets Wellarama?
I have signed a waiver with the Main Streets program in general, not for a specific.
Okay, I, I was just wondering because that was one of the things you brought up, so I just wanted to see.
Yeah, um, so yeah, that's a good question. If we have an advisory committee, who exactly are they advising? I mean, we have advisory committees now, but we don't have a designated who's being advised.
Well, I've never looked at the, uh, the CAC as advisory committee, because it doesn't even say that in the title. It's a Activities Commission. And as long as I've lived here, the CAC is the one that has put on the town sponsored events.
Yeah.
You know, not the, the nonprofit fundraising events, but these, these are for zero profit. The town makes zero money off this. And this is stuff that we're doing to bring our community together. So, once again, who would you suggest? Run the Fourth of July celebration?
I think it should be.
If you don't want the CAC doing it, who?
I think we're at the capacity right now, we would need an event coordinator, a hired event coordinator that, that does the management of our events. And I saw, I know there was a lot of donations for the Fourth of July. So I'm curious, because I, I just don't know, and this is something I could follow up on personally, like where that money goes and what that balance is. And if it is a non. And if it is a nonprofit. Commissioner, the commission, then what happens to the money that is donated to those events?
Well, because they're not their own entity, I'm assuming that that those funds come to the town and we account for them.
I don't think people can donate money to. I, these are, these are all the questions I have, I I plan.
Sorry, I will find out.
Well, I was under the impression at one point, early on in my, when I was on this board, I was under the impression that the. CAC was actually a nonprofit organization and then Patty informed me that it's not. But that was kind of the way it was portrayed to me anyway. I don't remember the situation or whatever, but.
So it was at one point years ago, it used to be a nonprofit and then.
I don't think it was because I think I think Patty did a search.
I've done a search of the Secretary State's website, I have not found anything.
It's been a long time, usually the CAC, what they do is they receive in kind donations. So they get businesses and people to donate things. For events.
Like the giveaways at the Easter egg hunt and stuff like.
And then I'm pretty sure like the Fourth of July is our first big public event. So it's been a minute since they've had an opportunity to run through a budget cycle too. So if it were a nonprofit though, there would be accountability to a specific budget, there would be a board setting boundaries on those activities.
Like to interrupt because they are accountable to a budget, they turn in a budget that we approve every year and they are accountable to that budget. So they do have that, so I just want to clarify.
I said it the wrong way, I meant in the in the sense of a nonprofit.
So what's the difference between a nonprofit budget accountability versus the budget they have to turn into us and they have to, they have to account for every dollar?
Well, and I think that's the difference too, because this is not, this is not the Parks Advisory Board. This is the Community Activities Commission and I think that's what separates the two. And also from like the Board of Adjustment, that's a quasi judicial board. The CAC is a commission, so I think that's probably why they're assigned a budget because they have a responsibility. To be accountable for that back to the town and then like the Parks Advisory Board is just advising in capacity, so.
Also have a budget though, do they not?
No, they do not. No, they they work with, they just provide advice to the Parks and Recreation Department or to town staff, to the wants and wishes. Of trails they want developed or parks that need improved, they get to provide true advisory capacity. Without any budgetary responsibility. So maybe that is the underlying issue that we're struggling with with the CAC is. At the end of the day, it's about. The money kind of right and that accountability, they do have assigned positions, they have a chair, a co-chair, a treasurer. They take minutes, so they're accountable for what's coming and going. We just can't regurgitate that right at this particular moment. But there is accountability and transparency for that. So maybe we need to have the conversation of do we look at investing in an event coordinator for these large scale community events? And maybe we look at the structure of the CAC to truly an advisory commission or. Board instead of. Because I, I don't know, maybe that that's kind of seems to be where the conversation is headed.
Yeah, and that's probably my confusion because in my head I have two classifications of group, I have the quasi judicial and then I have the others. So in my head, that's how I'm separating it. So that's likely where I'm drawing the advisory piece versus.
A commission.
Yeah, so that's that's probably, I think that's where I'm making my my items, but.
I'd like to weigh in here because I've got some questions. I mean, one of my things that. Causes me a little discomfort is what kind of liability exposure does the town? Are they exposed to by having? These people who aren't really directly under our chain of command making decisions. I mean, what, I mean, thank goodness, nothing's happened, but we can see that in other communities or have been some pretty significant. Issues which then turned into lawsuits and the question is what level of liability does this group? Which doesn't exist anywhere else in this format in the state that anyone can find. Can someone tell me what we're potentially going to step into here? That would be you.
And it it is an interesting commission and you know, Patty had said that this, it didn't start out as a nonprofit. But my understanding is it was a separate entity, it wasn't a registered nonprofit with the state. But it was a outside entity that got folded into the town some number of years ago. And so when it was created, it was created to maintain some of that autonomy. That it exists that that it had before it was part of the town. So that's why it is a unique butterfly of a commission. And it has its own authority to spend some money, but you know, in section two, seven, sixty. They prepare a recommended budget that should be brought to the Board of Trustees. Budget amendments have to be approved by the Board of Trustees, so they're given some authority to spend money on certain items. And it specifies contract planners, engineers, architects, consultants. So it it gives them the authority to execute contracts essentially within a narrow window of budget. That should be approved by the Board of Trustees. So it is unique, but it still is overseen by the Board of Trustees, it just has its own authority to enter into contracts essentially.
Enter into contracts? As a. As an advisory board, they can enter into contracts?
I think as trustee McCollum said, this isn't really an advisory board.
I know, they're in operations.
It really is a, it's a, it's a, it's a board or commission that performs tasks. It's a board that executes events and can execute contracts to make those successful. So it it has its own degree of autonomy that's different than advisory board. Yet it's still under the Board of Trustees for budgeting purposes. It's, it is unique, there there's no, there's no question about that. But I think it was, my understanding is it was folded into the town twenty some odd years ago for 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 a good purpose. But exactly what that was, I don't have that history.
The town is much, the town is much different than it was twenty years ago. And so I guess, you know, that the whole thing about the liability, I'm not sure that question was answered.
With all due respect, trustee Whitehouse, that's why the fireworks were pulled from the CAC and put into our responsibility. Because we, as a Board of Trustees at that time, decided that that probably shouldn't be the decision of the citizens. When we're firing large explosive towards a gathering of people. So you know, that's kind of, so answering your question of liability. I mean, that's, that's why the fireworks situation changed.
What about the rest of the Fourth of July, not the fireworks, excluding the fireworks? I mean.
It's a risk that we're taking.
Okay, so my advice as any business owner, if you identify a possible risk. I would look carefully at going, well, maybe I shouldn't have people up on ladders or maybe we should understand exactly what potentially were. Might exist here, I don't think going blindly on. I mean, my opinion is these guys should be removed from the operational aspects, they should be an advisory board. They shouldn't be doing the planning. I mean, I've been sitting in this room for oh, five, six years. And I would have to say that the town, not, neither the town nor this organization is really part. We could do a better job educating them. I don't think, I think with all the other things going on, it's not clear that we have done a a great job in informing them how the budget works. And things like that. It's unclear to me, uh, do they have to comply with the sunshine laws?
Yes, they do.
And do they?
We're fixing the email issue because some people did not know that, so they have all been informed. But yes, there were some issues with emails that has been addressed. Everything does.
I can tell you it would be impossible to really strategically plan an event or a a group of events without. Being able to off meeting, be able to pick the brain and make some choices.
If they were in advisory, would they have that sunshine law?
I I really.
Yes, they would. Any board that it is appointed by and any board or commission that's appointed by the Board of Trustees falls under that sunshine law.
Yeah, the only thing that you could discuss in email as a group is coordinating schedules. That's the only change that they made to that law.
Perhaps if there are bigger questions about liability and kind of the operations of the CAC. This is part of why we brought all of these to the board together because there were some common themes in all of the boards that we thought could be discussed. It sounds like the CAC may have some really specific questions that we need to dig into and we can do that. Maybe do that at another time, we we've got a number of other boards that we can, we can continue on. Because I I would like to look more into the the liability issues and I think perhaps we could talk about how it how it operates. Come back another time with to the to a work session or when we bring forward an ordinance and have a more in-depth discussion at that time.
I think discussion is a good idea. The one thing I would like to just add is that it does concern me to, in essence. I I think we worked through, how do we mitigate risk, I think that can happen, but it is concerning to say, because understanding. There's a lot of work that is done by that group of volunteers for the Fourth of July to replace that with full time staff. For essence, going to be taking what was volunteer hours before and taking that out of taxpayer dollars, that is a concern to me as well. So obviously, I think we need more discussion on this, but that is a concern that I have.
And I don't think it's one for one, I don't think that's how it works and there would still be a lot of, you know, participation from volunteers.
The question I have is at the last Fourth of July, I mean. How much staff time did this group that was actually planning it? Was there an ordinary administrative planning burden placed on town staff? Through the current planning process that occurred last Fourth of July?
Yes, there was and there's several reasons behind that. Number one, there were no clear boundaries set out with the CAC members about what time they were taking away from staff. That has been addressed, the other is, is that we have a new board that this is the first time, there was no Fourth of July last year. There was no events and this is the first event. We had several senior members that had been with the CAC for upwards of five years retire in twenty twenty. And so we had probably four people that were fairly brand new to the CAC, didn't really get to do anything in twenty twenty. First real event, yes, there was the Easter egg hunt, but it was Fourth of July. So there was more of that, but I think there's two sides to that. It was, it's not systemic as, well, this is just because we have this kind of a board. It was, all of us were learning. We didn't have clear boundaries set out as this is what staff time is to be spent on, this is what staff time is not to be spent on for the CAC members. That's been addressed. The second piece was working through, this is how this works, is how we plan the event and working that together. And again, that's just part of the process, so.
I have a quick question for you about that trustee Gator. So with all due respect, are you the one communicating and facilitating between the CAC and staff? Or are CAC members allowed to communicate with staff directly?
Yeah, so we do have a staff liaison to the town board, which or to the CAC, which is Hallie, who has done an amazing job. And part of the problem was is the CAC members were taking up way too much of Hallie's time outside of meetings. They were calling her, emailing her about things outside of the meetings, which were not bad questions necessarily. But we'd never put the expectation on them as hey, you need to bring issues and things to Hallie at the meeting. When she's not in the CAC meeting, she might be working on CAC stuff, but she's not your person to just talk to all the time. But we had never told them that and so they just assumed, hey, we have someone helping us, we're going to ask you questions. And I know that was probably what took up a lot of her time. But she is directly, she's in every meeting, she's directly taking things back to Patty and operations. So unless there's something that specifically needs to come to the Board of Trustees, I am not communicating that to staff, that is coming straight from Hallie.
So if we have a staff member that's there, then why do we need a liaison?
I think there's twofold to it and this last meeting was a good example because part of the issue was again, CAC members taking up too much time. There were some interpersonal issues that were going on. That's really not staff's place to step in in a situation like that. Because staff didn't appoint them, staff doesn't really oversee the town boards, they they are liaison to that. We as the Board of Trustees do have that, so in essence, we oversee those boards. So that really I felt was a more appropriate conversation that should be coming from me as a trustee versus our staff to those board members.
Okay, so I'm confused, just for clarification. So. You're communicating to the CAC when there's a problem, but the CAC board members are communicating directly with staff? Is that how that like, I'm sorry, explain that dynamic to me one more time in crayon form.
So as I see it, my role as the liaison to the board is to understand what's going on. So when there are things that need to come to the Board of Trustees, I bring those to the board and say, hey, this what's going on. So then my job is communicate from CAC to Board of Trustees, not necessarily CAC to staff. Also, if there is an issue with members of the board that were appointed by the Board of Trustees. That I see as is my job to step in and say, hey, we need to address this issue, this needs to be fixed. Whether it's a group at large or whether it's sitting down with a specific member. Because we as the Board of Trustees appointed them, so in essence, we are their boss, if you want to call it that. Therefore, if there's an issue, I should be the one to step in and say, hey, we need to make sure this is addressed, it doesn't continue.
Well, I don't want to get us off onto a huge tangent, but that is a great segue into a delicate conversation that I think. We would all like to have is when there is a significant issue with a member on one of these boards or commissions. What is the resolution process, what is mediation process, is there a vote of no confidence? Is that decision made by the board that they sit on or is that board made by the board that appointed them? So if if there is a significant grievance about one of these members or volunteers that is sitting on one of these boards. Or commissions or advisory boards, how is that, how is that?
Handled.
Handled, thank you.
Same thing with attendance, you know, any other, any other of those kind of grievances that we should definitely have a process to.
And it would, and it would always be by the Board of Trustees. If they're appointed by the Board of Trustees, they would be removed by the Board of Trustees.
Okay, so at this point in time. I'm I'm fairly certain that is not clear in the bylaws or the rules or ground rules or whatever. That if there is a significant issue that with a specific member, that it is the responsibility of the chair. To bring that to the attention of the Board of Trustees to have a discussion about it. And then at that point, like is that, like, do we do that in an open meeting?
That's we, we will work on some process ideas on that.
Would that fall under our ability to do under a. Executive session if that was desired by the member of the board?
Well, they're not personnel, they're not.
That that entire process has to be open, open and public.
That's, that's why I asked the question.
Well, can I just, I mean, I know this is some good information, but we've got a few more boards to go through. And then apparently we're supposed to be looking at. Street projects and budget discussions, so I'm wondering if we, if that's not, if that appropriate.
We'll come back to this, we've got some notes and and Dan and I, Crystal sit together and put some stuff to get some information for you. So let's move on to Parks Advisory Board, currently seven members, including one trustee is a voting representative. Term of office is three years. Board of trustee terms coincide with their elected terms. Criteria, eighteen years of age, residency within a seven mile radius of the town, which we need to talk about. Ownership of a business which operates in the town and the Pooter School District item as well. Two things I want to tell you about this one, now that they've taken on recreation, they would like to change to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And and take care of all of those, all of parks and recreation items. Advisory information to you, so that would be, you know, programming, things like that, they would discuss and then, you know, bring those. You know, items to staff more than likely. Because that would be like budget issues and things like that as far as programming and things like that. But the other item is I had Bob put together. I, one of the things I'd forgotten to do over the last couple of days was to find out exactly what that seven mile radius looks like from town. And it's, it's a lot of space, so it includes North Fort Collins, Waverly, most of the homes between Wellington and Rawhide. And I don't exactly know where that seven mile radius should start, I had him check from Town Hall. Just because it doesn't say seven mile radius from any location, so just wanted to point that out.
I like trustee Kenny's all encompassing G, GMA idea. I think that's pretty.
Pretty manageable.
Pretty manageable, it it's logical, it makes sense.
It makes sense.
Thank you. So any thoughts on the Parks Advisory Board? I know you've talked about not having a voting trustee member, do you, would you like to move that to a liaison position?
I think that would be a good idea as being the board member, the trustee that's on this board. It feels like sometimes. I'm being looked at as the guiding light sometimes, you know, and. I really don't want to be making, you know, I don't want to be. I don't want the PAB to follow my lead. And I think they feel that way as being a voting member.
I bet.
So I would much prefer to be a liaison to sit and listen if they have. Because a lot of times there's questions that come out about budget and obviously I I pay attention to what the budget is. And so I can help, you know, as well as Dean, explain, you know, what monies are set aside for what. so I can help, you know, as well as Dean, explain, you know, what monies are set aside for what projects, you know, that would kind of fall under the PAB, which if it turns to, if we turn it to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, then obviously they'll have, I mean, they, they, obviously, they know they can't, they, they don't have the authority to spend any budget, but when they're making, giving advice to Dean to pass on to this board, they look, you know, they, they look at the dollars and what's going to be spent on what to kind of help them advise and get the most bang for the buck. I guess you'd call it, you know, in that situation. So, but I just, I would feel more comfortable if I wasn't a voting member, because then I could basically, you know, answer questions and listen to questions that they have that pertain to what the board does in those, you know, as far as, you know, the end situation where we vote on different things, but I just feel like that if I talk too much, I feel like that, you know, I'm, I don't want them to think I'm trying to push them one way or the other. So kind of in the same situation as the Board of Adjustments, I would just assume not be in that position. You know, let that group that are very passionate about the parks and the recreation in this town, you know, come up with their own ideas and their own advice that they would like to pass on to this board. And, you know, help maybe during conversations about those, that, those, the advice that's brought to us, you know, maybe give some clarity if there's, you know, not quite the clarity there, you know, because I will have said in those meetings and know what they're, you know, the entire discussion is surrounded. You just, it won't be just that little synopsis I can kind of background it to. So as far as the, the, you know, the radius and stuff, I, if it was going to remain just the Parks Advisory Board, I was, I would have leaned towards it just be town citizens only because this is fun, you know, the parks are funded by the taxpayers, not by the county, people that live out in the county per se. So but with the parks and recreation being brought in underneath the one umbrella, obviously, our surrounding community members participate in the recreation side of, of, of the, the parks and recreation department. So I wouldn't have a problem with the GMA or however it lays out. So those are my two things on that.
Okay, moving on to Planning Commission real very quickly. Planning Commission, so seven members, three members consisting of the mayor, a trustee selected by the mayor, and a trustee selected by the Board of Trustees, and four citizens appointed by the Board of Trustees. Term of office is six years. They, there is no membership criteria, so nothing says that they have to be a resident of Wellington, things like that. So again, the same discussion, do you want, I mean, do you feel that trustees should be on the Planning Commission? If so, and Dan and I talked a little bit beforehand, it's, you know, either our thought is to leave it as is, or just remove all trustees as a whole. Dan can talk about that a little bit.
This is another commission that's largely, was originally defined by statute, and the town then kind of dropped the state statute into the town code. So the reason there are seven members and three of them being the mayor and two trustees is, that's the default in the state, but it is, you can vary it by ordinance. So that can be changed anytime. But one issue is, I think it'd be better not to, having board members sit, Board of Trustees members sit on the Planning Commission offers some real opportunity for conflicts of interest for a variety of reasons. And it is very strange that the state statute actually makes that the default setting, is to have board members and mayors sit on the Planning Commission. But since it is state statute, it's very defensible. If there's a lawsuit for somebody suing the town over improper decision, leaving it as is, we could say that came from state statute. If you change it to just be one Board of Trustee, then we're not resorting to the, or falling back on the default of the state. We're then kind of creating our own structure, which there is an inherent conflict there. So we'd recommend either removing all trustees and the mayor from the Planning Commission, and I'd actually recommend that there not even be a liaison that sits there, but we can talk about that. Or leaving it as is and leaving it with the default of the mayor and two trustees. The real conflict is, an appeal from the Planning Commission comes before the Board of Trustees. And so when you're looking at an appeal, the Board of Trustees is sitting as a quasi judicial body, and you need to look at the evidence that is in front of you. And it's only natural for somebody who also sits on the Planning Commission to sit there and say, well, when we talked about this the other day in the Planning Commission, we talked about X, Y, and Z. Well, that's not in front of the Board of Trustees for their decision now. So that creates a real problem if that's, if that becomes, like I said, if that's appealed to the courts.
I mean, could you even sit there in a quasi, I mean, wouldn't that, isn't that just an inherent conflict to review a decision that you might have made and?
I, I think if you're looking objectively at the makeup of a Planning Commission, yeah, it's, it's, there is a conflict. However, like I said, because it's the state statute's default, it's somewhat defensible. When you're looking, as the Board of Trustees, and you're looking at an appeal from the Planning Commission, you really need to look at what's in front of you. So you just have to, as a member of both boards, kind of forget about what you heard before at the Planning Commission. But, you know, like I said, if it goes to court, and they say, well, why are these members on both? That's what the state says, that it likes, it's just more defensible because it's the default. It's a far better idea to not have any board members in that room. So if an appeal comes before the Board of Trustees, you're looking at it with completely fresh eyes. That's why in some places, the Board of Trustees shouldn't, is told not even to look at Planning Commission packets. It's better to not even have them in the room. So when it comes before you, that you're looking at it just the evidence in front of you, not what happened at the Planning Commission.
Well, I, this is, I mean, my view is, if this is best practices, that I, and I sit on the Planning Commission, that I think we should be replaced by non-trustee members, is my sense. If that is, because again, your whole, like, this whole statement about if there's an appeal, then it comes before us. And although I did make a comment about separating the roles, as at a certain point, that might be a little, a little more difficult. And again, removing that completely and have a, a different individual might be a prudent course. So I mean, I'm supportive of, of not having the trustees on the Planning Commission.
And it is definitely best practice, and it's far more common in municipalities that don't fall back on the state default.
Agreed. I agree. I'm also a Planning Commissioner, and I started as a Planning Commissioner before I was a trustee. So, but I agree, I, and I, I feel like I see with fresh eyes occasionally, but it's hard not to, because we do a lot of work on the Planning Commission. And you, and I'm not saying that the Board of Trustees doesn't use that same intensity when they're reviewing this, those items that are then recommended from the Planning Commission, but it's, it's a lot. It's a lot more background. And in my mind, it's all public. So we aren't necessarily being given anything more than any other trustee could see, because they could as well attend or review anything that we did in the Planning Commission. So nothing's a secret necessarily. But I, I agree, I don't think trustees should serve in that role as a Planning Commissioner. But I do think that that must be a resident of Wellington proper.
Oh, yeah.
They are enforcing zoning of our town and our codes. I'm not enforcing, but you know what I mean.
Well, trustee Kenny, I've served on the Planning Commission as well, and I agree with both of your statements. I agree with trustee Whitehouse as well, that we should prob, not have a trustee serving on that commission. I do believe that they should be residents of the community. And I'd additionally like to take that one step further and require them to at least have been a five-year resident to apply for the Planning Commission. Because I think that we want to do our best to ensure that these Planning Commissioners have done significant due diligence and education background and understand the community before they make significant impacting decisions. Because we, we really don't vet these Planning Commissioners on their, their education and background. We really look at these volunteer applications very openly. And I think that by at least adding that additional requirement on there provides buy-in to the community. You've lived here a while. You understand the culture. You've seen the impacts of how decisions that you make today roll out four years later and can have significant impacts. And that's something that this board has talked about quite a bit, is dealing with legacy challenges that have been passed down. And maybe that's one consideration that might help make better decisions on, on the Planning Commission.
Well, I think the five-year, this actually makes a lot of sense, because I think if you look at that study from, that Magellan did, that I think forty percent of the people who responded have been in the town for less than five years, or so it's like forty-nine percent of the people. Now, I don't know if that actually truly represents growth, but that I was like, oh, that's pretty interesting. You know, it may just have been those who took the survey, but I think your point is a good one.
Just to go against that though, too, that means that a significant portion of our residents haven't lived here that long. So those newer residents wouldn't necessarily be represented. But either way, I think I, a residency length requirement is fine, but it could never be longer than a trustee's requirement.
That's one year.
Yeah, so that.
Can we put a preference in there? So like, maybe a requirement of a year, of a, well, trustee is.
You have to live here a year before.
A year, okay.
So I think that that is a significant compromise.
Yeah, but can we put, like, a requirement at a year, but can we put a preference in there to say we would really prefer to see people who've been here like three to five years? Can we put that? I, I don't know how that works, is why I'm asking the question. Because then that could, if we can put that out there, then when we're making the decision, we have two people that are ultimately fairly equivalent in terms of skills and mindset, but we see that one has been here for five years, one's been here for two. I, I, I don't know. Does that get us into more trouble or not?
It seems like if that was the preference of the board, when they come before the board for a vote, I mean, they still have to be approved by the Board of Trustees. It seems like that preference could be brought into, brought into consideration then, when you're voting on that member, rather than putting that into the code itself. I think it'd be easier to have a, feel a lot clearer to only put requirements. I like yes, no things.
That could hinder recruitment a little bit. And we, I just asked Crystal, we don't have anyone on our application that says, how many years have you been a resident? But we could add that to the application, so that way you would know. You'd have an idea of how long people have lived here.
As a thinking of recruitment, one idea that has only been brought up very recently inside of this, what didn't, wasn't able to get into the packet. You know, thinking of the Planning Commission, which currently has seven members, and three members would no longer be on it, which is a pretty big hit. And the Board of Adjustments, which it currently has seven members, but perhaps the two members of the Board of Trustees would no longer be on it, and we have a vacancy there. Some municipalities do actually have a joint Planning Commission slash Board of Adjustments. So that might be a way to make sure that the Board of Adjustments was manned or personed by people who are interested and knowledgeable about the planning process. So that would make sure that that is always full, and it also makes sure that the Planning Commission itself, you've got those seven members that you could kind of combine the two boards into, into one. This is something that didn't get into the packet. It is possible. I need a little more information. If it's something you'd like us to think about, that we, we could definitely do that. But that might alleviate some of those concerns of recruitment, making sure you get the right people. That's.
Pretty good idea, I think.
Interesting.
I'm always ensuring you got someone there, because it's been a problem.
You, you can thank Cody Byrd for, for that genius idea, which, which I think was, is really, really a good one. But.
One last thought on the Planet Commission. I'd like to stay. Okay, I mean, I like being there. I, it's state statute. I don't see a conflict. They don't see this conflict at all. I like, at least, I'd like to stay. Everybody else wants off, I guess you get off. I'd like to stay.
So.
Parks.
Well, I'm just throwing mine out there. I know I'm outnumbered. Hey, I'd like to stay. I like the board. Leave the mayor on there. Anyway, whatever you guys want to do.
So I did want to share a couple of things. I think a lot of people have shared most of it, and I would agree that I think it would be best to not have the trustees on there. And I know, one of the things is meant, it is all public comment, but for example, I can't go review Planning Commission packets, because I can't, if I do that and I make a decision and I base it off of planning something that was in the planning packet that never made it to the Board of Trustees, and that comes out, I can't fall back to, well, state statute, because state statute doesn't allow me as a trustee. So it's really not, so for those of us who aren't commissioners, it's not public, because we're not allowed to go read those. Because, and so that's something that it really, I think, is important to have that. There's a couple of other things. I think the making sure that we, as trustees, are making decisions on the information from the Board of Trustees is important. And I know there have been situations where we've had something that came to the Planning Commission, it comes to the Board of Trustees, and a comment is made, well, in the Planning Commission. We, this was discussed, or this was discussed. The other issue, and this has come up as well, is an item comes to the Board of Trustees, it's been through the Planning Commission for multiple months. As you said, you guys put a lot of legwork into it. And there has been the comment made in months past, where it's the first time I'm the trustee seeing this period, and someone else who's seen this multiple months is saying, you know what, we've been over this all before, let's just get this done. And so I feel like in one sense, I'm being rushed to get through this, because it's, I'm sick of seeing this over and over again. Let's just make a decision. And I'm sitting here, I'm like, this is the first time I've seen this. I want to actually ask these questions. So I think that that causes a little bit of concern there. And then the other thing, too, is that when an item comes from the Planning Commission, let's say it's a unanimous approval to the Board of Trustees, it's kind of already set that, in essence, it's almost like it's already passed, because that's almost half of the Board of Trustees that's approved it. So that's another concern that I have, that not a majority, but almost of our board is making a decision on an item before it ever comes to us as a board. So I really think it would be better that we have it just be two completely separate entities. We don't have anything to do with Planning Commission, other than appointing them, and then they do their thing.
I'd like to note also on the Planning Commission proposal, we want to make sure that when this is, something is brought before the Board of Trustees, that it's after the Land Use Code amendments, that process that already, or changes, that, that process has already begun at the Planning Commission. And there's a lot of expertise in that room, so we think it would be good to finish that process.
I don't think you can have it both ways.
Well.
I'm off.
So the idea was to, to bring it forward, probably sooner than later, but not have it go into effect until the election. And so every, current members would serve out the remainder of their term on the Planning Commission.
Okay, we good? Last two are quick. Hopefully, Brett Wellington Housing Authority seems to be running smoothly. All members were appointed in May of 2020, and they are appointed to some staggered terms, the first person. Their term will be up in December of this year. The only criteria for membership is to be a resident of the town or a resident, resident of the surrounding community. And I believe we do have one member, one voting member who is appointed by the mayor, and right now that is the mayor. So, so really, I think my question is, and that's typical of a housing authority, to have an elected official on that Housing Authority Board as a voting member. My question is, the criteria for membership is to be, it's, and it says specifically, to be a resident of the town or a resident of the surrounding community. And it doesn't give any definition for that. So whether you believe that should be the GMA, or they should be a town of Wellington resident, because it is the Wellington Housing Authority, that's up to you.
And I'd like to note that the Wellington Housing Authority is not an advisory board. To get back to that earlier conversation, it has its own authority. It's funded, I believe, through federal and state dollars. So it's, it is not purely an advisory board. So.
Thank you. Any thoughts? Residency requirement.
Does, I mean, with the makeup of the board, how would that cause a certain number of vacancies, not knowing who actually sits on that board?
I've never checked their addresses.
What I would recommend is that any changes we make to residency not apply until the next term. So anyone currently serving on a board would continue in that capacity for that term, because, so we don't have anyone.
Yeah, no, nobody's going to get kicked off tomorrow. They'll serve out their term, and then when it comes time, if, if they are out of our GMA or out of the town of Wellington.
And just to clarify, because I know we've been talking about a lot. So if anyone's watching this, like, freaking out, you guys are capturing information that you will then bring back to the Board of Trustees at a future date, which we will approve. No action is being taken tonight, correct?
Okay, I'll talk, I'll discussion, just a work session. No votes being taken.
For consistency purposes, I'm comfortable with the GMA.
Everybody else, you good?
GMA is good, because as, if we feel that we need to extend the GMA, we don't have to re-extend the boundaries every time. So it's consistent, it's consistent in the sense that every time the GMA changes, that boundary goes out farther for people who want to serve on the board. It's consistent in the sense that every time the GMA changes, that boundary goes out farther for people who want to serve on the boards.
It's pretty generous as well.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, everybody good? Thumbs up? Okay, Wellington Public Library, um governed by a seven, seven-member library board. Most recently, the town board was or the Board of Trustees was appointed as the library board in um. Resolution eight twenty eighteen. Um, we haven't been having library board meetings. We can start having that. I did. Talked to Ross a little bit about an advisory board, you know, having a Wellington Public Library Board. Um, he thinks it's. He's comfortable with the idea, but not right now. He's got too much going on. He does not have time to handle a board as well, so I told him, you know, maybe. Maybe at election time, um, you know, we can talk about that and and see if. What he's at the point where he's prepared and ready to take on a board to to work with. So um, really, nothing, nothing to ask about that one. Um, the one other question that we'd had as staff and Dan may have others. Most municipalities only allow uh someone, a citizen, to serve on one board at a time. Um, that is not something that we have put into place and with any of our advisory boards. Just wanted to throw that to you. Um, you can think about it a little bit, or if you have thoughts about it, we can, you know, talk about it now, but. That's one of the things that we we noticed was not in any of our bylaws or in our municipal code for any of our advisory boards or commissions.
I think it's a good idea, but I think it's an idea we should work to enact when we're turning candidates away because we have too many. Not right now where we're sitting here and we don't have candidate that's or we can't put candidates on boards. We're sitting here, we're like, ah, we need people, so I would say. Future, yes, but right now I don't think we should add that on. If we've got citizens who are willing to serve, let's let them serve.
Everybody else good with that?
How many boards?
I was gonna say, maybe we consider limiting it to two.
Two boards?
I would, that's probably good too, but yeah, I wouldn't. At it at this juncture, we don't have people knocking down the door. We need to figure that out and.
Okay.
And then, you know, that may change down the road, but.
Okay.
Hopefully it changes down the road.
Yes, that's the plan. All right, thank you.
Last thing, uh code of conduct, we talked about um how to how to operate right within each group. That would be a great thing, I think, that we would have a specific agreement too. So not only liability. Uh, concerns, but also an agreed to code of contact. And part of that, I think, is i- if you are a volunteer in a board or commission, you can't necessarily speak on behalf of the town. Or say that you are not willing to work with certain nonprofits or businesses because you're speaking on behalf of the town. I think that's something we really need to make sure. It's controllable.
We can work with putting together, I my goal is to have an advisory board handbook.
Great.
So that it's something that's universal for all the advisory board members and would have that information in it and.
And we have begun a a conversation at the kind of staff level about volunteer waivers and some of those liability. Issues that you talked about earlier, so a lot of that conversation is also happening and kind of along with this boards and commission discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree with trustee Kenny. I think the conduct is a huge thing. And I think that's the benefit of the liaison is because as long as we keep it to just, this is the conduct that the board has put together, because we've put together a pretty. I think it's a good, it's a very good code of conduct. Um, we can also explain to them what, why we put that together and the thought process behind that, so it's not just something that's just handed down. We can actually explain to them. I know that. Helped with the CAC to walk them through that and say, here's the reasons that this was put together. Here's how this has really helped us to function better. And this is our expectation from all of you. And like you said, you can't necessarily speak as a representative for the town, but also informing them. Even though you aren't officially, you still do carry that where you talk and people can associate that you are involved with something on the town, so I think it's very important to have in place.
Well, trustee Gator, I'm really glad that you brought up the ground rules that we all established. And I was wondering if this board would be comfortable if we were to post something, we were worked really hard on that and it's been extremely effective. Would it be okay to ask to give direction to staff to maybe highlight that on like our trustee page on the website? Like, these are your trustees and these are the ground rules we agreed to during our strategic planning session. Is that? Something that you guys would be agreeable to?
I'd love to have them on the wall in here too.
I did, I was thinking the same thing, but thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great idea. Yes, please. Okay, so this, this was a kerfuffle. That's the best way I could say it. Um, realistically, this in this should have been figured out and done with the water rate study. Um, since it was not, we needed to come up with other, another way to um establish those rates. I I've thrown out a couple different options um in this, in the email or the memo that I put in there. So you can, people sometimes figure the base rates using the pipe area. We could figure the base rates using the census data, which Bob can talk about if you want to have more information on that, essentially. Um, that's related to flow rate and meter size. And option three is to not make any adjustments and simply use the base rates and. At the the residential base rates and tiers for all water utility customers, or the option four was to increase the rates. For three-quarter inch um non-residential or commercial um to sixty-six dollars, the one-inch base rates to one oh three sixty-two. And then make no changes to the one and a half base rate or the two-inch base rate, because those first two were the only two that. Did not meet the minimum that we already had um established as far as rates uh for. Our non-residential or commercial rates. Um, we have eleven accounts, so looking at option four. There would be eleven accounts that would not see any increase, a hundred and twenty-five of those accounts are either the three-quarter inch or one-inch. Meters. It's. There's no easy way to figure it out without going through a full-blown study. Generally, those studies, they they take your debt service information. Then you back into the rates and the water size, the meter sizes and the flow rates. And really, we don't have, we don't have the capability to figure that out. We have pulled our. Hair out, trying to figure it out. So uh I don't know if you have any thoughts, if you want me to go back to the drawing board. If you like any of these ideas and and want any of the options and want me to work more on it to get somewhere defined information. Or if you want some more information that I haven't included in the packet, just let me know.
Just get you some thoughts then, as I'm saying.
Yep.
Individual thoughts and email to you.
Or even, yeah, if you want to email it to me or you can say it now and we can document it however you would like.
Well, I would. I mean, if our residents are paying sixty-six dollars. For a three-quarter inch tap, which is what most of them have. I can't see that. The commercial, I mean, they're they're they're, again, that that base rate is to pay for infrastructure. Right? Well, these folks are using the water and they're hooked up to our system and I think they need to pull their fair share. Now, the question comes in a little bit more nuanced is. Does it become greater because they're they have a bigger tap? I don't know about that. Maybe that's that's picked up in the the tier usage. Because that's really, one, one side's paying for infrastructure and the other side is paying for the actual pot water. And so I think something needs to be done about the uh base fee if if again. Developers have been brought up to current prices, the bulk water uh station is paying current prices. And our residents are doing the same. I mean, I know it's a smaller group, but I think it is only fair that, I mean, I know this isn't as big of a group. Number-wise, but I think it's only fair that they have to pick up their their side of that at at the very least, is my opinion. Now, whether there's something else based on having a larger tap, that is a little bit more nuanced and. And maybe we don't have the time to uh, no, here comes Bob.
So so so.
Thank you. Yes, I I I couldn't have done this without him, so.
Yeah, go for it, please.
Uh, did you say you didn't, these rates, one eighteen seventy-three and one twenty-six oh three, those are the current rates?
Um, no, the one eighteen seventy-three and the one twenty-six oh three are current rates.
They are current monthly rates for those lines. Okay, all right, they're they're up there, okay. So really, what we're talking about is the three-quarter inch and the one-inch lines bumping them up.
Correct, that's that's option four.
And then, and then.
I think to your point, that was uh absolutely correct. They all need to come up to what we're all paying on the minimum for sure. Uh, but the tier rate on these bigger lines is, that's where the that's where the usage is. That's important to know.
Bob Gelling, Public Works Director, that makes perfect sense, right? But um it turns out that most utilities don't approach it that way. So we did a little research on surrounding communities. And almost all of them have a consistent usage rate for commercial usage and they address. They have a kind of a ascending base rate, so for instance. Um, really, Loveland and Fort Collins all have a similar. Approach towards the commercial rates and in particular, Fort Collins uh. Proportional increases are very close to the larger increases that Patty included in her, in her summary. Um, I know, having worked at the Loveland Utility, that. In general, commercial rates are less financially driven and. A little bit more policy-driven a lot of times. If if communities try and go to encourage a certain type of development. Or if commercial is especially important to them, um sometimes you'll see what might make sense from just kind of. A purely rational point of view, get changed a little bit to uh kind of align with that community's policies relative to development. And the kinds of customers that they want. But in general, as that tap size gets bigger, our commitment to serve gets bigger as well. So we're signing on for a bigger responsibility in essence. To provide that that uh, say it's a three-inch meter, that amount of water to that customer. And because of that, uh their potential impact on the utility is bigger and that generally gets reflected through the base rate.
So Bob, in that you're talking about option two. The one where it increased the base rate, I'm like, three oh ones for the one and a half inch and two inch and three inch.
Yeah.
The three inch up to the nine forty-three fourteen.
Is to the way Fort Collins sets up their base rates. And um the other communities I mentioned also have ascending base rates, but uh not to that degree. Smaller steps.
Can I ask you a couple of questions based on your professional experience?
Sure. I am standing here, so I can ask for it.
The um, let's say it's a restaurant, not not a brew house, like what what size tap can you? Would you see like a family restaurant wanting to purchase?
Uh, one and a half-ish, something like that. It's very difficult for a restaurant.
What about like um a brewery and they're brewing on site? What size tap do they usually look at?
If if it's a nano brewery, um like uh is being proposed currently, that could be three-quarter. Uh, all depends on the on the rate of production, right? Somebody like um a new Belgium, I don't know what size tap that is, but that could easily be a three or four inch tap. I know the Fort Collins Brewery, because I did that project, that was, I want to say a two-inch tap that we did for that one and they produced. Barrels a year they produced, but I'm getting guess far more than someone like the local breweries that we have here now.
So just for like a economic development planning perspective and based off the community results that we received, like what kind of. Businesses or industry or manufacturing would require a three or a four inch?
Uh, we only have, we don't have any current three-inch taps, I don't believe, but we have, um, well, we do, it's the high school. They have a three-inch tap. Of the rest of those taps, you see how small the numbers are for the larger taps. I think we could take that data in terms of who that is out of the the material.
Got the, who's got the two inch, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Um, so that is uh Pooter School District. Um, three are Pooter School District, one is Town of Wellington, one is Stitches Acute Care, willing, so the hotel. Um, Big T Investments. Okay, thank you. Those are the two inch, one and a half inches, Come and Go, um, the T-Bar. Wellco Oil and Cameron International. Eighty-seven fifty-sixth Street.
Right, Cameron.
Oh, so I have one other question, and this might be a stupid question. So pools. What like what kind, like do they have caps? Like, how do we track the water on pools?
Um, generally, they, it depends on how quickly you want to fill up a pool, but a pool is really not that big in the big sense, right? Um, twenty or thirty thousand gallons, maybe more, fifty thousand gallons. Forty-two thousand at Sage and they actually accidentally drained their pool the other day and um.
Again?
But no, just the one time. And um, so they refilled that with a fire hydrant meter.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we worked with them to uh do that filling on off-peak production times. So that that really, in my opinion, would be my preferred method because we can kind of assign some times when they're. When they're actually drawing that water through that mirror, it works with them and us.
Well, I mean, my my sense is probably pools unless you. Were draining it for repairs or cleaning, you're probably really just dealing with evaporation, correct? And that could probably be replaced with the.
Just wherever tap they have for the. You know, the facilities there, basically.
Thank you, Bob. So that that was very helpful. Um, I'll just be blunt and frank, I'm. One of the trustees that's agitated that we didn't make these changes to water rates all encompassing. I've. Stomped my feet about that this entire time, that we should have just done it all at one time instead of. Peas mailing it along because we just continually are ripping the Band-Aid and the scab and the stitches open, which really sucks. But based on the community survey results, we still have to make an informed decision, so I appreciate your feedback this evening. Because I'll be making my decision based on. Wh- what's going to be the best economic driver, like what is still going to make our community affordable for. Commute, commercial development to come in and the existing commercial development to continue to exist. So thank you.
So Patty, one more time, uh you changed the the three-quarter inch line into one-inch line, but you left the one point five inch line and the two-inch line. This as it is.
That's option four. That's option four, correct.
Can change on the one five and the two inch there. That's the kind of money they're paying.
Correct, so.
One-inch line, people are going from eighteen to one oh three.
Yes.
And the three-quarter inch are going from eighteen to sixty-six like the rest of the residents.
Correct.
And and option four, sorry, just.
Uh, the one inch goes from forty-five oh seven, I'm sorry, the one inch goes from forty-five oh seven. To one oh three sixty-two. And option four.
Okay.
Then option two is the one where it's the full-blown. Uh, analysis using the census data. For all sizes, starting with sixty-six dollars as the base. Um, total um average consumption is fifty-one thousand gallons. Does FYI overall.
All of them together or does he?
Yep, all of them together, average consumption's fifty-one thousand gallons, um total commercial revenue. Twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-nine cents.
When we're looking at residential rates. Um, we really looked at the bottom line. We have to raise it this much to make sure that we have this much money.
Right.
So um, and I appreciate that we're doing this, these models based off of. You know, best practices and things too, but I would like to also see. The proposed increase. Amount of money, so. And I don't know how to do that.
Um, how much averages of what their, what their, what their average?
Yeah, or or maybe if it were done this year, so if we could compare usage for two thousand twenty-one. And say if these were the rates, what would the difference be? I don't know how else to better do that, but um, I mean, when we look at. It's fair to charge you more, that's one argument when when we determine the more price for residents was based on achieving a specific goal.
Yeah, we don't have a specific goal.
That's.
And that's the first, that's the frustration for me is because it wasn't done at the same time.
Right.
As the study, so I don't have a goal to meet.
Yeah.
And so I was trying to figure out, you know, what would be equitable.
Right.
What wouldn't scare off our commercial users would, you know, would, what would? You know, still bring businesses to town.
Yeah.
What would cause people to not call you day and night about their increased water rates?
Right.
You know, not to go through that whole exercise again, so that's, I was trying to balance it all out and I, there wasn't a goal to meet and that's. And I, the next time we do a a water rate study, we will certainly add them all in.
And that's exactly where my confusion is.
Yeah, yeah.
We're committing to charge you more, but we.
And that's why when Bob and I. And that's why when Bob and I
Other than that it's fair, but you know, like what, what's, where are we trying to reach?
Yeah, and that's where Bob and I came up with using the census data that was used to determine the impact fees and you know, so that was
That's extreme.
Trying to, trying to come up with options.
Sure.
Well, I mean, I guess having the understanding of the financial impact, I mean, and again, obviously the water utility needs to be as an enterprise fund and needs to be in the black and not in the red. I mean, do you foresee this, any of these changes having any impacts on the residential rates? Cause again, we don't really know what, like would, would it possibly lower them for a resident? And I, I just don't know. I mean, it seems like that would be part of the picture, or maybe we need to have the full blown rate study, which seems like that's, we just did one of those.
The amount of income is not that much on these. It, it, I don't anticipate it making any difference with the residential rates. It's just not enough. It doesn't generate enough revenue to make a difference.
And that would be even after the changes proposed, it still wouldn't?
Not much, not, not, not enough to, yeah, make an overarching change at a doll, even a dollar, you know, difference. It just, it, it doesn't create enough revenue. We just don't have enough of those commercial accounts.
So few businesses to so many residents.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Do we have a chamber liaison on the board? No. No, I did talk to, um, Kristi Cannon this morning at the chamber meeting. She was going to try to come to the meeting tonight, but she didn't give me any feedback one way or the other on it.
It's a good question.
I mean, or yeah, we might want to loop some of these folks in and see, obviously again, work session, we're discussing. It'll come back to the board at some point for action, but yeah, I would certainly think getting some input from some of these folks would be great and maybe you've already done that. I, I, I just don't know.
Well, we've sent out extensive surveys to our residential community. Why would we not consider doing the same thing to our business community, whether it's through contact information through business licenses or using our local chamber as a collaborative partner? I think that, you know, at least possibly even presenting these options to the commercial businesses and then they can evaluate the impacts to their own business. I mean, it's, it's something, it's better than us just making a baseline decision with out having done the full blown study, at least we're, we're bringing in feedback from the people that are going to be impacted the most.
I think the town should do it. I don't think that the, we should pass the chamber to this because I mean, what's the percentage of, of these businesses are chamber members? If it's not one hundred percent, then it's not an accurate survey in my mind. So we have everybody's address because they have water bills with us right now. So I just assumed that we kind of approached it the way we did with the residents, just have the town send out some type of questionnaire, whether it be an email or in a water bill or something.
Do we capture email addresses on business licenses? Yep, we have business through that and through utilities, we have some as well. Um, and we, and the plan was to do that. I wanted to get some information to you all first. I didn't want you to hear about it through the business grapevine that, you know, there were some discussions going on. And of course they're not going to like having their water rates raised, so, um, if, would you like me to present all four options? Or is there a couple two that you would prefer that we, you know, bring forward to them? And we will definitely reach out to them, but I certainly didn't want to do it until I got it in front of you first.
So I think the biggest thing from my standpoint is we just need to make sure that we, I, I, I think it's great to get feedback and I think that I, I think we should be the ones doing that. But also in evaluating that feedback, we need to make sure we're evaluating it as we did with the residents. You know, we're not just taking it and saying, oh, well, because the businesses said that we're going to give it more power. We need to make sure that we're listening to all members of the community the same. If we're taking feedback from the residents, treating it a certain way, we need to make sure we're treating the feedback we receive from businesses in the same way in our decision-making process. So I think the consistency, the same way, put surveys together, send it in the water bill. I think options is a good idea because that's what we did for the residents. We said, here are some options that we're considering, what's your feedback? Which ones do you think are best? And then we can take that into consideration because we got it with residents, right? And that's how we kind of came to the, do some part of it in October, part of it in January, because that seemed to be more of the feedback leaning towards that from the residents. So I think it'd be good to do something like that with the businesses as well.
I'll get it done. Thank you so much.
All right. Appreciate it. Moving on, item four. Future streets.
Good evening. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Uh, you sounded very excited about that topic, Mayor. I want to give, uh, the, the topic that I wanted to present tonight is, um, future streets projects and, and we're approaching this at a pretty high level right now. You've got some information in your packet from some past efforts um, and some ideas for, for the future, but really what we want to try and do is get this in front of the board to start thinking about the challenges that we're likely going to face, uh, with transportation in the coming years. Think that most telling is some of the twenty twenty one budget sheets that we included in the package just as a reference. It's from your adopted budget. It's just a scan of those pages. But you see that the one that's the most telling is that the twenty, or sorry, the five year capital improvement plan. Where even just one project of a significant dollar value puts future funding years in the red. And we know that that's one project that's important to the community and we have lots of projects that are important, including our maintenance operations that, uh, we're reminded about from time to time that we have some streets that need some attention. So trying to manage the, the budget and the types of road projects that we already have and that we know will continue to grow. What we really wanted to do was provide a starting point for some of those challenges that we're going to face on transportation and ask for some feedback and guidance on maybe some strategies, some ideas on how staff might help the board prioritize those future projects that have, uh, potentially some pretty big price tags on them. So we've got a, just for, for quick reference, the, uh, the cut sheets, uh, if you will, the one pagers, uh, illustrate four projects that the town had identified in two thousand eighteen. Those were four of our top five, uh, transportation projects identified that we were partnering with Larry Mer County and surrounding jurisdictions to ask voters on a, on a ballot initiative if the voters would approve a sales tax to fund regional transportation projects. So these four projects were determined to be the regional, uh, transportation projects that Wellington submitted. We did also submit Al Canyon Road, which Larry Mer County listed as their highest priority and they're funding that otherwise. Even without the, the vote of the, uh, the ballot initiative. So that project is getting done, but the county is leading the charge on it. We haven't really had a big say in it. But these other four projects are still projects that, um, probably carry pretty high weight. All four of these that are in your packet, um, were identified in the Conference of Plan Outreach Engagement and by staff as continued priority projects. And they, you see on those four examples, um, there's a cost estimate value that was established nearly three years ago. So with inflation, we expect those will be higher by the time they actually get funded. Um, and those are some pretty big price tags. So you can see the challenges that we're facing. Uh, staff is going to be continuing to work on finding other available revenue streams. There's discussion about partnering with the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Front Range instead of the TPR, the Transportation Planning Region, potentially a bigger pot of money to pursue federal funding dollars for transportation projects. But we're not there yet. We know that's only one alternative. Um, and there's others that we'll be pursuing as well. But really just, we're looking for some guidance on what are the priorities of the board for how we can start to program some of these transportation projects for the years to come.
We got it. Number one, we need to continue with the MPO. That's, that's, that's a given.
Yep.
Okay, and then we're still, we've already had talks about that with a few people already, including a couple of, uh, higher level government people. So, um, I think that's gonna, that's on the way, right Patty? We're getting that ready.
Working on that. We gotta get ourselves off TPR.
Yes, because I think we got great support going to the MPO now. I got the good support from the chair. They want us on and so does the county. We're good. Other than that, our probably, our first immediate one is over there at the school intersection.
That's number one for me.
So that becomes, and again, obviously the price tag for Cleveland Avenue and, uh, I twenty five, I mean, that's, and again, I'm not convinced thirty million is going to do it, but, uh, that also has an impact pretty much over in the community, but I, obviously I need sort, who's, town has not won Powerball, have they? Yeah, you can't play it. Yeah, I mean, obviously the school crossing is, what is it? The traffic impact study said something like, was it thirty four hundred discreet trips a day or something?
It's pretty close.
I thought you had seven hundred and fifty K for that project so far.
So we do, and that's, that's part of the conversation that we'll have to bring back at another, another meeting. The town did apply for, uh, CMAC, which is congestion mitigation air quality, uh, funds. Those are federal transportation funds. We submitted a project for this intersection, um, at the curve of Highway one where the school district is located. Uh, we submitted a roundabout project for that, uh, funding and the roundabout was determined to be of substantial benefit to air quality to receive those, those specialized earmarked funds. So we did receive, it was seven hundred and ten thousand dollars of CMAC funding in addition to, um, two hundred thousand dollars, the school district in our development agreement identified that was an appropriate dollar amount at that time for specific to this intersection improvements. So those are the funds that are currently available. And you can see in the, the, um, on the five year CIP program, we broke that cost allocation over multiple years because you don't pay it all at once, you pay it as you go. But the total project cost on that is estimated at five million dollars. And so we've got less than a million budgeted for that or funded obtained for that project. So there's a significant shortfall to implement what is, has been identified and I believe is a very important road project for the community.
We need to have some conversations with the county about their portion or them pitching in on that project as well. We didn't get much from the school district, but at least there was something. But I think that we need to, I don't know what level those conversations need to happen, but that's also a county road that we're improving as well there in a pretty major way.
They asked me about it at the town hall or the open house last night.
The county did?
Yeah, the engineers. If we're, what we're doing, I think that's a great question for Cody. The CMAC money is, has to be spent within specific fiscal year?
It has to be spent within three years of award.
Three years, okay.
Talking about the school district, they, that was a phased, they have like a phased plan for that campus, right? And as the other phases come in, will they pay additional road impact fees?
Yes, so that's correct.
Okay.
The two hundred thousand dollars that has been paid to date is earmarked in escrow for this intersection, but it was for just phase one of the school project. You're absolutely right.
Okay, so when, if, let's say for instance, we foot the, the whole bill for this right now, you know, the current contribution is two hundred thousand, but later on down the road, they'll be paying more in when they build another elementary school and potentially a transportation center as well. So there's additional money coming in the future, hopefully from Pooter School District that would offset this project at a later date.
That's the theory and you're absolutely right. There'd be additional funds from the school district. There's also additional, uh, undeveloped land in the county adjacent to this that would also be contributing factors to evaluate for funding. The challenge I think that we run into is footing the bill for five million dollars now when only a million dollars is available and relying on those future paybacks from future development. I wish I had a crystal ball, but I can't tell you exactly when those funds will be available. And so the town carries that debt service in addition to needing to do other transportation projects. And so we, we don't want to get into a scenario where we're stacking debt similar to what we've seen in the water fund. And so there's a significant challenge on the timing, um, for those paybacks.
And I'd be concerned about are they going to need another intersection? You know, change if they're using another, if they add another school and then a transportation. I, I'm fairly certain they're not going to run their school buses through the parking lot and driveways of the, of the elementary and high school. They're going to probably have its own road. So now all of a sudden we have another intersection to deal with that. It's going to eat on all that money up, so.
I think at that point we push back a lot harder on the list on that one because
Somebody pushed.
Right, yeah. Well, we can tell them, we're not paying for it. Cause I think that like with this one, we identified there was a major safety issue that we were concerned out, the school district wasn't concerned about. So unfortunately we're in the point where we're footing the bill because other people said, oh, we don't think it's a problem, which it's not good, but.
So, so we, the ballot question that's going to the voters, I think we approved sending that about continuing the split. I mean, I'm guessing those revenues are part of just looking at the, uh, revenue available for capital projects. Cause if you look on page twenty two of the packet, you don't have to go out very far to see that, um, the street fund is not looking so happy. Any of the funding, you know, and maybe this is a question for Ms. Tippett that, uh, you know, with all the infrastructure funding, is there, I can only assume there's a hope that some of that funding could help us, but obviously that may not be defined as to what it is applicable for and it looks pretty grim. I'm talking about the infrastructure package that's going through, because again, page twenty two shows this fund going underwater next year if we continue with, looks like if we do this, this intersection, right, at the school.
Judy is on the line if you want her to address that question.
That would be great.
And I'm sorry, while I was being added as the panelist, I did not hear the question.
I think we, we muted the TV earlier. We might need to unmute our sound system.
Hold on. I don't think I've ever heard the train here.
What?
Sorry, I just, I, I just, I just, I just, I maybe I've just never noticed it.
It's because we're always talking.
True story, true story.
It's my daughter's birthday and it's the first time I've seen her in a week and she's going to be getting home in about ten minutes, so I'll see you guys later. Thank you very much.
Thanks Rebecca, tell her happy birthday.
Thank you.
I mean, is it, is it, I mean, you've got this thing paid off here by twenty twenty three. Is that what I'm seeing?
No, not exactly. Um, that's the, that's showing the three years of funding under the CMAC funds, but the anticipation there was that when we're using CMAC funds that we have awarded currently, we'd have to spend that within that three year period. That means the project would likely be completed there. That doesn't mean those funds are available today.
Because if you look at right below that three years, the available funds, which is what trustee Whitehouse was alluding to, you'll notice that in twenty twenty one, it's at positive six hundred eighty nine thousand dollars. And then in twenty twenty two, it's negative one point eight million dollars. And then in twenty twenty three, when the project finishes, we're at negative three point seven million dollars. So we would be, in essence, if we were to follow that schedule and nothing else were to change, we are short three point seven million dollars to complete the project. Based on just what has been projected here.
Because you gotta use a CMAC fund within three year.
We do, and it, and typically
But you're saying that project has, what, you don't have to pay for the rest of it in three year.
I think what we were anticipating was that the construction would be completed on that schedule. There's design, there's right of way acquisition potentially, um, and then obviously construction. Those projects take a little bit of time to get through, so we don't, that's not a one year project probably. But we don't, we, it, it wouldn't be prudent to do it over ten years because we don't want to have a construction project open.
No, but we don't want to take the debt, right? I mean, we don't, we want to get away, is that what, that's the deal.
Well, that's, that's part of the challenge is that the, the funds aren't currently available and so it would be debt service, most likely it to, to pay for it.
And the other concern
I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I was going to cut you off. The other concern as well is that if the, you know, this high school is going to be opening, what, end of twenty twenty two? And so we want to try and get, part of the point of getting that intersection fixed is because of the high school opening. And so if we're, you know, putting that off till twenty thirty, then do we really need to change it? If we're, if we don't feel it's a safety concern with the high school, then let's just not do the project. But if we truly feel it's a safety concern, we need to get it done sooner as opposed to later.
And, and that's a good point. Part of the other consideration And, and that's a good point. Part of the other consideration on this particular project is also that there may be, what, what this cost is showing. Is the ultimate design, meaning we don't anticipate it would need to be changed or expanded beyond. Um, our current thinking for that intersection. There is a possibility that there's. An interim step that could be achieved that would be a safe. Intersection improved beyond what it is today, um, but not a five million dollar price tag. Um, that might be a more reasonable funding goal.
For the immediate future.
For the immediate future. Um, going to an option that's more of a, an interim safety type of step and not the ultimate design that was proposed. Could mean that we don't qualify for the C Mac funds. And we'd have to return those back to um, to the TPR, um, the Transportation Planning Region. So that's something that I know this board is waiting to hear a report on. Um, the results of the study of that intersection, which is about ninety-five percent complete. What we're missing is good recommendations on how this board can move forward. And that's part of why we had, asked to have this discussion tonight. If that's a high enough priority project, then we want to find a way to use those funds and make that project successful. Um, but we also know that the very last page in your report here is. Really just a, probably a short list of, you know, transportation projects that all could be needed within the next five to ten years. Um, and so balancing these, these needs, I think is what we're looking to do. What are, what are the highest priorities that rise to the top to be funded in, in near future years? Which projects could be deferred or um, you know, can we do interim steps to get to the bigger picture here? And where do those funds come from? Um, I also don't want to, as, as Bob's probably staring at the back of my head here, I also don't want to. Forget to mention that, that these are just the new capital projects or expansion projects, and we did. Include a category down here for maintenance and repairs. We've got uh known uh expenses. For our existing streets, not just um new intersections and new roads that we will need to build in the future. So we, and we, we threw a lot, a final category at the bottom there, too, I don't want to forget about. Um, there were kind of less of the roadway improvements and more um multimodal trails as alternate modes of transportation. Um, and an ADA transition plan, making ADA improvements, which is also part of our transportation network. All of these were very high. Um, uh, concerns and comments raised during our conference and plan effort. Um, and so we don't want to lose sight of some of these other um non-road related uh transportation improvements. Um, so funding all of these types of projects is. Kind of where we're at today, uh, which, which of these categories or um projects specific, which, which have. More importance to the town and to the board, um, so that we can start to program these and look at it from a budget standpoint. How do we build it in?
You think we should take some time and?
Yeah, I'm almost thinking that uh. This is probably an entire work session. Did uh, we sort out technical aspects, so?
It, it all, it was all working earlier.
Judy, are you there?
I am here. Crystal, can you hear me?
So she's talking.
Amazing, you come in, set it all up, it's all working fine, and then we have to use it and.
So while we're waiting for Judy, I have a political question for Mayor Hammond. With knowing that we have these seven hundred or so thousand dollars of C Mac funding that came through TPR. Is that going to be an issue with them wanting those funds back if we're going to be transitioning to the NPO? Because that might need to.
We're getting off, huh?
Yeah, that might be like, hey, we'll give the.
Give away the money and get off.
So I don't know if that, I mean, I don't know if we're like, hey, we're going to get off, they're going to be like, well, we want the funds back because you haven't spent it yet.
If we can get off.
So I don't know.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's the way it would work. Yeah, typ- typically, once a project receives funding, it's funded unless those funds are not able to be used.
My, my uses was these funds that was to show the TPR and illustrate to them, this is. How, how you would benefit if we weren't here anymore.
Sure, okay.
For every three, two or three years, we wouldn't be searching for funds of this magnitude. And when we're off, pull the money that they might lose by us leaving, and I believe only about forty or fifty thousand a year. So, so the numbers are finally there, they have a reason, oh, okay, makes sense for you to leave by the numbers.
Okay, perfect, okay, that's, I just was, I was just curious because I'm not in that dynamic.
We got the money, we might as well keep it, do something with it.
Okay.
I think we need to figure out how to deal with that.
Okay.
But there's some other big stuff in here, and some of this stuff, but we're not any closer to knowing what to do with these, these overpasses. Than we were three years ago.
But, and I think that's one of the, the topics that I know has been discussed a little bit at the staff level. Um, a couple of years ago, uh, in the budget process, the, the Board of Trustees had identified. Setting aside a third of a million dollars a year for three years to start a design of the uh. State Highway one I twenty-five interchange in an effort to help move us up C dot's priority list. Um, and I think that that's still a, a good objective. I think one of the questions that the board could look at is, is that the highest objective? If that just moves us up the list and it's still ten years down the road. Could those funds be utilized to fund another project that has a shorter timeframe for delivery? Um, I'm not saying that that's a good option or a bad option, but it's certainly something that we've looked at. A million dollars is a million dollars that could go to another project and then reset the clock on funding that I twenty-five interchange design. Um, so that's, it's an option.
That would make us, I mean, you know, the thing you got to give up there is the shovel-ready project that we might have if we did that when this infrastructure money comes out. If we get it, you know?
But are we going to get thirty million dollars out of that, though? Because that's, I think that, I, I thought, I think the idea is good, but I think if it's just that. Our thought processes, okay, this will maybe get a C dot to consider doing something, but we, I, I mean, it'd be one thing if we knew. Okay, if we do this study, we've got a shovel-ready project ready to go, C dot will do it in two years. They'll, they'll start it, not finish it, but right, okay, in two years, you're on the schedule, we're doing you in two years. But if it's like, well, maybe possibly they could. It'd be one thing if we didn't have anything else to do, but it's like, I know, um, just yesterday, it was reiterated. Um, bus service between Wellington and Fort Collins is a concern, and there's been said that there's some funding available from Larimer County that can help with that. So I think we're hopefully having another meeting on that later this month potentially. So I'll bring more information, but that's something that I've had several citizens and yesterday shared with Mayor Hammond and myself that that's a concern for them. Roads, I hear about that all the time. Um, as much as I would love to do the intersection at Highway one or at I twenty-five and Highway one, I think it's needed. But the problem is, is we can't, we can't fund that. And I think that just keeping money stuck sitting there, and then if we do a study, how long is that study going to sit on the shelf? If that study sits there for fifteen years?
Well, I think trustee Gator, I suspect uh, because it's a state highway, you're probably talking. Town, county, C dot, state, and probably federal funds. I, again, this would be the biggest infrastructure, well, except for a couple of other things we're trying to do. This also directly involves multiple other entities who are part of this process. Again, clearly, it's a C dot right away, sitting in Larimer County, and I, I can only assume funding will come from multiple entities. Is that a reasonable, we're not footing the bill for thirty million?
Well, no, no, we wouldn't. Well, traditionally, no, um, the environment at the state and federal level continues to evolve, and, and we're seeing things that. Are, in my career, have been previously unprecedented. Um, the notion of um, local municipalities taking on preliminary design to move themselves up a list. Spending local tax dollars on a design project for a, for a state and federal roadway. Is relatively new uh in my experience and one that surprised me a little bit when I came to Colorado. Um, in my experience in Kansas, that never happened. Uh, it may be happening now, and I can reach out and learn some more from some of my past uh coworkers, but that, that's a evolving. Frontier for us that we have not seen in transportation in the past as. Federal funds continue to get restricted and limited and spread to other, other needs. So that, there, I can't say with certainty that we'll be alone, um, but I can't say with certainty that it's going to be funded by others. It's just hard to predict what the environment's going to look like a couple of years down the road.
I guess I would question the. When that was initially set up. There was a different district manager or whatever they're called for C dot, that person's obviously no longer here and has moved up. And we have somebody new. Has this subject been broached with the current district person to know if. That's still a valid thing? Or has things, you know, have things changed with the change in leadership? We had lunch with the new one, and we brought it up. We took uh.
Kathleen Rocky?
And we took, um, we, we took our person with us, too.
Um, Alex?
Alex, the galaxos, and talked, and we talked. And uh, you know, we really, I didn't feel any better. Did you feel any better? She said, you're, you're one of a hundred towns around here with the same problem. Okay, that's what we got. So there was no difference in, 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 in. I guess we were glad to buy her lunch, you know, but uh. She's just as workable as the last one.
Okay.
And that's why we got that, he's the one who gave us that, this is the only thing that we could afford to do. Option to get us up the ladder, and when there's shovel-ready projects, there, we have one. And when this, the money comes available or MPO money comes available, because that's MPO money could deal with this, it can help, it can help with this, and. I was just wondering, because there's been a lot of changes in C dot, you know, there's a new, there's a new C dot director, you know, which could have changed the way. County Commissioner, they're with us.
Okay.
And so it was a good, it was a good staff, they know who we are.
Right.
I was just wanting to make sure that, you know, if we're. We talked about. Rad hole and, rad hole and money that it's. How we won that intersection and all that, you know?
So, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, but I, I do believe that. And I, I see the benefit of moving the money. I, but, you know, I, I get that. Nothing's going to happen in five to ten years, do something with it. But the idea was to get. To put yourself in a shovel-ready position, and if you do get to the MPO, whether it's sixty million dollars a year, I believe, they're talking, is that right? Patty, is it sixty million?
I can't confirm that.
I can't confirm that, but it's that kind of money, I believe. Can you remember?
Um, I don't recall, and I was actually just questioning too, I don't remember if the million dollars that we had allocated was enough to cover. A full preliminary design.
Thirty percent?
It was.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent, so.
That was.
So thirty percent's a, a long way from shovel-ready.
No, but you're on the list, and that's a lot better than being there going, well, we'd like to have this intersection. At three ninety-two and all that out of winter, well, we're ready, we've got our stuff ready to go. And, you know, when you get to that table, then you, you've got a little bit more than, than the dream.
So I have a question. Can I circle back and ask what the original question was? Are we trying to prioritize the projects that were presented by Cody? Because we're kind of getting off on a tangent here.
No way.
That's what we need to get to, there's a lot here, so we ought to just try to get back.
Yes, um, the, the um, I twenty-five interchange, it's obviously a hot topic in the community. A lot of us want to see us be a priority on C dot's list, but the reality is, is C dot doesn't really. Listen to us, and we're not a priority for them right now. We will be eventually, hopefully. So what do we have control of right now, and what is, what is the biggest public safety risk? Right now, relative to, to these road projects? So I guess that would be my question to you, Cody, is. Other than the I twenty-five. Overpass of the projects presented, which are the most significant risks to the community right now in their condition?
Condition can mean a lot of things, and we obviously have other players involved in that, too. Um, just as a real quick aside, I, I will say on behalf of C dot, we have seen a lot of changes. And we've seen a lot of really positive changes in the way in which they interact with our staff. We're, we're very much encouraged in terms of those communications moving forward. Um, we were disappointed today to find out that we didn't receive any funding for the Main Street Revitalization Grant.
We didn't get it.
We did not, sorry if I didn't mean to spill the beans, I think the, there was a late, a late email communication today. So, so that's disheartening, um, but it doesn't stop us from, from continuing to leverage everything that we can. Um, and so suffice it to say that, that with a, a partner like C dot. Road conditions, safety, there's other players involved in that. I do think that the um, the intersection with Highway one and County Road nine sixty-two E is a very high priority in my mind. Part of, part of the guidance, I think that'd be helpful for staff. Um, is kind of a methodology of prioritization. Our, our safety concerns the highest priority. Um, is economic development a high priority? Um, some of these factors can do dual purpose. Um, I'm a big advocate and believer that making. Significant improvements to that intersection by the high school would drive economic development, have tremendous benefits for the adjacent properties that are in a. Growth corridor of the community. Um, there's no doubt that interchange projects would have a huge economic development impact. Um, so, I mean, we're open to ideas on how to kind of work through. Prioritizing some of these projects on, based on the desires of the board and the community. Um, safety is obviously a high priority, economic development, we've heard um, is a high priority. Are there other factors? Maintenance, again, we don't want to lose sight of that. Our old town streets projects, I'm not even sure if I, I did put it on the list here for maintenance. I mean, that's been a high priority and a multi-year project, that's a big project. Um, so we don't want to lose sight of opportunities there as well for our other streets. Um, so that's, that's kind of, I'm sorry, I'm not answering the question very directly, but if you gave me the list that we have today. The high school is the highest priority from a safety standpoint, um, but I don't want to marginalize the other projects that were identified as well.
Absolutely, because the, the old town streets have been a, one of those legacy projects that we seem to be. Uh, it's a never-ending legacy, it just keeps going. Um, so I, I think that that would be, so if I were to order them, the high school one would be my top priority for. Public safety right there, number one, and then second would be prioritizing the old town streets and maintaining those, that's. Uh, those are my, my individual preferences, if you're asking for them this evening.
I mean, I would agree with that, and, and one of the things I know when we were on that, uh, when. The mayor and I were on that uh. Larimer County Regional Task Force on Transportation, I mean, I know you. I mean, these tear sheets that list all these projects, and there were. A whole pile of them, there was a whole matrix that was used to. Examine these projects and try to. Quantify some things that weren't necessarily quantifiable, at least to me, I mean, because again, complex subject. And I don't know if something like that would. Is that too complicated? Is that? Again, we're sort of, I would say, we're looking at this and go, well, yeah, we need to, yeah, this would be a good one, this one would be a good one. You know, is there some way that a, a, a quick matrix could be created, listing some things and rating some stuff? Is that an unreasonable task to, to ask to give us a better sense or? Because again, I can, I can see the needs for all these things, and the question is like, well, which one do you do? I mean, and.
Yeah, and, and in, excuse me, and in fairness, when you look at the, the list on the last page here, we've identified a. A variety of project types and a variety of, of scales, some of these are, are scalable, some of them are not. Some are very big projects with big price tags, some are a little bit more manageable. Um, I guess tonight, we, we're not necessarily asking you to prioritize every one of these projects in rank order. I think that the, the general approach that we're looking for is more of the methodology. Is there a particular type of category? I heard, you know, safety, I heard maintenance of old town streets. Those are, those are helpful for staff to work through these projects um as we develop the budget. So we have an idea of what the board's concerns are as we're lining out projects for, for possibilities. I think that'd be the most help for, for staff tonight is. Kind of that methodology, what, what rises to the top in terms of types of projects, and then we can start to flush some of these out based on your prioritization.
Well, one of the other things I'm looking at on, on the last page, I mean, obviously with. You know, the new landfills going in, I'm not sure where they're at at construction, I haven't, I don't think the waste sheds had a meeting recently, but uh. I'm guessing, depending whether that direct haul line holds or what happens, I mean, County Road nine north of sixty-two E, I suspect. Is probably going to see a little more traffic, uh, heavier traffic than it is right now. I'm guessing there's going to be garbage trucks, the, the street collection trucks, not the big haulers from the central landfill, so. And I know there's some, I know there's some. Issues uh with some right-of-ways down there. But I don't know, that may be something to look at, because again, that's county, it's going to be a county traffic impact as well.
Well, that was something that I expressed last night at the open house with the county and the, the community planners, that, you know, we appreciate. Them being transparent about these road improvements with the dump coming, but at the end of the day. We can plan to divert the traffic all we want, but they agreed that there will. we can plan to divert the traffic all we want, but they agreed that there will still be ancillary transportation through our community that's going to have significant impacts um, on our road systems.
I mean, and it's unclear, the last meeting I went to in the waste shed, they said that they might not be able to enforce a direct haul line that they suggested might be at Douglas.
I mean, how? How would you enforce that?
I, I, it sounded like they didn't have the regulatory authority to, to do it, or maybe you just couldn't manage the logistics of it. But yeah, so I mean, we're like, but yeah, maybe.
Yeah, so I, I, I feel your pain, yeah.
Trustee McDonald, please herd the cats.
That, you know, it's a, it's one of those things that we want to try and plan for. We know it's coming. We know that the county kind of, um, maybe underestimated the impacts it's going to have on Wellington. As trustees, I guess the best thing that we can do is just be a squeaky wheel with the county to try and get them to help assist with our projects as much as possible. They don't disagree with us that.
If they're going to run all that trash down that intersection, they ought to be getting involved in that intersection, don't you think? And we got something there.
That's county, the high school intersection is where a lot of that's going to come through, right?
Well, they're, they're supposed to be diverting it up two eighty-seven through Owl Canyon, that big section that they're paving right now.
Right.
Um, but the reality is, is Google Maps doesn't, is probably not going to take you that way. It's going to give you the fastest, most direct route and that's going to be right, right through us.
And certainly considering that, at least on the, on the landfill and waste shed conversations, the, the local trash trucks that picking up our Wellington residents' trash would be taking most likely that route instead of going south to the Taft Hill Road site. So at a minimum, these are trash trucks that may already be on our local roads, but they would certainly be having a different route um, for their drop-off, which may concentrate them on County Road nine.
They're going down Highway one and then take it right.
Or unless if we had a franchise agreement, could we then direct them to go to?
Possibly, and we're, we're getting a little off topic on the transportation component of that, but, but you're correct. That's an option to consider.
Should we maybe try to get back to you with this list here or just try to pull around with it ourselves? I mean, I'm kind of like, right now, I'm the herd. Trustee McDonald, school, all roads. Whatever else you can do with the ADA.
And look, look for opportunities to leverage with partners and another additional grant funding, NPO and other.
Intersection money out here on C dot's not working for any, or any benefit, then do something else with it.
Well, and for what it's worth, Mayor Hammond, something interesting that I've learned is that C dot rates their projects and their traffic studies based on the numbers of fatalities. So I, I mean, that it is, and it's so unfortunate. It is wrong. But the, I mean, that's the reality of it. And I mean, so we, um. So we have four years approximately before we have a huge population of brand-new drivers that are going to be driving on the same road that trash trucks are going to be on. I mean, I'm foreseeing some bad situations happen and public safety, I think, should be a number one priority. For what it's worth.
I hear that. Thank you. That's good feedback.
Sorry for the fun fact, but.
I think we've received some good, um, dialogue tonight and it does help staff in terms of, um, at least working through our current budget process. I was, hopefully Judy could have, um, spoken up a little bit more, but um, we'll circle back with her as a staff. Yeah, well, so we'll continue to be reaching out on this. Um, and I also heard, if, if, I don't want to misstate, but I also heard that using the available C Mac funds that we did obtain was, was also a high priority if possible. And so we'll investigate options for, for doing that, uh, as well, even if it's a an interim step, if that's still an option that we can pursue. Is that fairly accurate? If we can. That's, that's why we pursued it. Yeah, okay. Well, I think we've got good guidance. Is there anything else that you wanted to see, Patty?
Nope, that's perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you all. Anybody else? Real quick, good meeting. Thank you.
Patty for the win.